The Community Services Director for the City of Westminster. And tonight, we have with us the Westminster Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Westminster Business Association representatives. We are all here to provide you an overview of a proposed partnership to support the activation of Downtown Westminster for increased foot traffic, promotion of our businesses, attraction of visitors, and overall sense of vibrancy for our downtown. To my right is Jamie Chavez. She will be doing this presentation with me as well. And Mr. Brian Head to my left. We also have in the audience members of the Chamber's leadership team, including Parker, Rich Seymour, Brian Dice, and Mike Ludlow. And we are here, and I will go ahead and kick us off. And then if you would hold questions till the end, we'll be happy to answer those at the end of the presentation. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so what is so interesting about this partnership is that it bubbled up organically from our partners on the private sector side through the Chamber of Commerce and again, the Westminster Business Association, Downtown Westminster Business Association, which is a subgroup of the Chamber, so fully contained within the Chamber of Commerce. As you know, many of you were at the ribbon cutting for the offices of the Chamber of Commerce in Downtown Westminster. We're very excited about that and love to have the presence and additional foot traffic that that brought to our community, as well as the many meetings that they have and the different folks from around our community that they're bringing to the area. But you know Downtown, we've talked about this before, is really at a point in its development and its lifecycle where it has gone from a vision, good, solid, excellent planning to construction. And now it is at that point where there's almost 1,000 people living there, there's many businesses, there's retail, there's the Alamo, that awesome sold-out show yesterday for Minecraft with the family that I enjoyed. So definitely a lot going on, it was packed. But we know from the private sector that when there's not opening weekends or things like that, how can we help energize and bring activity and life to Downtown? And going back to that original master plan of Downtown, always envisioned to be a really active neighborhood, but also an attractor for folks from around the region to come, spend money, generate that sales tax that we need to drive our city budget and support activities throughout the city. So it had always been planned to have the URA in place to create TIF funds or tax increment monies to allow the Downtown to self-generate these funds so that they had money to reinvest and maintain a quote-unquote "higher level of service" than in the rest of the city. And that's a self-governing choice of the business and the property owners to tax themselves at a higher rate. There's 35 mils that go into the GID, that is, it was bought into and voted on by the property owners so that they can have that higher level of service. And one of the aspects from the URA funding is to provide this push, this impetus, the shot in the arm, to help with activation and get that off the ground. So today, we're going to be describing to you a pilot project that we have. We would like to start, obviously, everybody has really big ambitions. We have two ideas before you, I would like to call it better and best ideas from the Chamber. And this has really been months in the making. We've worked together, we've collaborated for many months. Oh, and Matt Simmons is here, the head of the Downtown Business Association. Hi, Matt. And we would, you know, like to get your feedback tonight and your input on some of the ideas. And these are all potential ideas of kind of small, medium, large activations that could happen through the Chamber and their role in managing this and supporting them in activating Downtown. Next slide, please. All right, and I am going to turn it over to Mr. Brian Head.
All right, thank you. And the city and economic development have been great partners to the Chamber. We founded the Chamber over 10 years ago, 12 years ago now, with the vision of bridging the gap in Westminster. I say it all the time, Westminster, when we founded the Chamber, we talked about, a lot about Westminster was made up of five zip codes, three school districts, two counties. It's geographically and socio-economically diverse. And we really felt that the business community was calling for something to bring the community together, whether it's the historic part of the city, Downtown, north by the Orchard. And that's really a need in the community that the Chamber has filled over the last decade. And we've done that by not just focusing on the business community, but on the nonprofit sector, on our schools, and building community partnerships. And we've worked with the city on a number of occasions successfully over the years to do that. And as it says on the slide, "Our goal is to continuously improve the business climate and build opportunities for growth in Westminster and the surrounding areas." And that, in a nutshell, is how, you know, another way to say that is, our focus is to make Westminster the best place to do business, to live and work and raise a family. So with the new Downtown operation, the Chamber's been involved since the beginning. Some of you might recall that we participated in the pitch to Amazon at one point, when Amazon was talking about relocating here. There's been several iterations of the plan, and the Chamber has always been willing to try to partner with the city in the ways that we can to make this a successful part of our community. And not just from an economic standpoint, but from a community hub standpoint. This is a place where people can come together, there's transportation, there's shopping, there's live workspace, there's affordable housing. It really has the potential to be something special, not just in Westminster, but across the state. So we're excited to partner with the city and take the partnership to the next level. Jamie is going to outline a couple of different options, we think better and best. As Lindsay said, we're really excited as a Chamber to take the partnership between the private sector and the nonprofits and the schools and the city government to the next level and really elevate our community in the Downtown area to become something really special, not just here, but across the state.
All right, thank you. We can go to the next slide.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight. Excited to be here. The Downtown Westminster Business Association represents the voices of the Downtown businesses, and they are hungry for this activation. We have Matt Simmons here tonight who came in. Matt is the founder of the DWBA. Thank you for being here, Matt, and a supporter of this partnership that we are proposing and the partnership that we've built between the city and the Chamber and the DWBA. The businesses don't just want events and programming and foot traffic, they need it to thrive and grow, and many of them are still recovering from challenging seasons. We've heard repeatedly from business owners, "I really want to be a part of something vibrant, but I don't have the time or the staff to do it," or "I really want to show up, but I need someone to lead." And so this is what they're asking for from the Business Association and from the Chamber. And the Chamber is uniquely positioned to fill that gap quickly, professionally, and with deep community alignment. Without activation, the businesses are feeling isolated. So the Downtown businesses aren't just open to this, they're hungry for it, they want to see it happen, and they're counting on this partnership and our commitment to the community. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. So the Chamber is uniquely equipped to take this on, as I mentioned, we have a shared vision for a vibrant Downtown. This proposal reflects a collaborative vision between the Chamber and the city to drive economic vitality, increase foot traffic, and embrace the overall experience in Downtown Westminster. The Chamber's role as a connector of businesses, nonprofits, and regional partners makes us a natural lead in activating public spaces. We have a built-in infrastructure and relationships. The Chamber brings an immediate access to 400-plus businesses, nonprofits, and regional partners, and that, these people are ready to engage in this project. And we already have trusted channels of communication and promotional infrastructure in place, including our emails, our e-blass, our social media, our business leads groups, and the regular events that we are hosting already. We have a track record of results, our successful execution of large-scale events such as the awards gala that's coming up, the Taste of Westminster, which had nearly 600 people at the last one, and then the lighting ceremony that we did Downtown for the first time last year, shows our ability to plan, promote, and deliver impactful experiences for Westminster. We're agile, experienced, and we're deeply invested in the Westminster community. We also know the local audience, so as a Chamber, we're very embedded here. We know what the businesses want, what the residents respond to, and what our partners are eager to support. And this makes us, again, uniquely equipped to design activations that are meaningful, inclusive, and locally driven. We can offer flexible and scalable execution. We're proposing two options, again, the better and the best option, that we'll look at in just a minute, to allow for strategic scaling based on funding. And every dollar will be spent efficiently through a mix of high-impact anchor events, pop-up activations, and family-friendly events that so many residents here in Westminster are looking for. And we can offer low-barrier, high-engagement programming. So we will focus on programs that invite people in, things like live music, food trucks, markets, interactive art, family-friendly events, wellness activations, and business-led pop-ups that are designed to bridge the weekends and the weekdays and night and day traffic. And we're building momentum. The Downtown Westminster is in a crucial moment of transformation, as we all know. Investing now ensures that we can build and instill that sense of community and place while we grow. And a vibrant Downtown is obviously a draw for talent, tourism, and new business investment and new tenants. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. Okay, so these are some examples of what the proposals look like. This first slide shows the potential activation at a $200,000 level, just an example. And so we can kind of look at some of these events, these are just kind of proposed or things that we could look at. Signature community events, such as the holiday lighting that we had last year, festivals, Halloween events, concert series, cultural celebrations, movie nights, and then smaller things like the pop-up markets, Taste of Westminster expansion, where we're just focusing on the Downtown restaurants, Small Business Saturdays, and shop and SIP events, and then some interactive and community-driven programming, wellness events, family-friendly Sundays, again, public art walks and installations, performances, and then business workshops and networking. It's not a one-and-done, our goal is to create sustainable, growing programs that evolve with the Downtown and become self-reinforcing over time. So we can look at the next slide. This would be the expanded activation at the proposed $300,000 level. That would include, you know, expansions in the markets, themed nights, food and wine festival, multi-day festivals and celebrations, potentially a New Year's Eve celebration, and then enhanced community engagement. So an ambassador program through the DWBA, expanded wellness programs, expanded family-friendly Sundays, restaurant weeks, again, just public art activations, and just kind of a broader, more expansive offering at that level. So the investment from the city is catalytic here. It allows us to build the framework for what this looks like, to prove the concept. It allows us to engage businesses in participation, collect feedback and data, and then to attract support and additional partners. So over time, we're building towards sustainability by including sponsorship packages for events and series, creating vendor and activation fees where that's appropriate, leveraging non-duse revenue models through the Chamber, and pursuing grant opportunities and private partnerships to help supplement public investment. So as momentum builds and the Downtown becomes more activated, businesses will see the return and become more engaged. And I'm going to hand it back over to Lindsay.
So as you've heard from our partners at the Chamber, this is about strengthening economic impact and economic vibrancy, but also our ties in the community and building that neighborhood in Downtown and for the broader Westminster, City of Westminster community. We believe that because this is led, this has, as I said, bubbled up from the genesis was the business community that asked for this, that we started having conversations last year, probably around September, and just talking about, "How would this work? What do you need to be successful? Let's put this down on paper and start to put some deal points down." And it really grew from there. There was a ton of excitement from Downtown Westminster Business Association, other members of the Chamber, that really saw the value in having a private sector-led initiative as far as programming, what do you need to drive activity, what will help you the most so that your business can be successful? Because as I mentioned at the beginning, you know, that Downtown is at this inflection point where we have 1,000 people, almost 1,000 people living there. We have strong retailers and restaurants and movie theater, hotel. We're talking actively still to many developers to bring more investment to our Downtown. All told, there's been $500 million of private sector investment in our Downtown. And all of that activity has generated, as I mentioned, the TIF and the GID funding, the General Improvement District funding, all of those things are choices made by property owners so that they can have a higher level of service. And this is just one piece of that level of service that the private sector has come to us as the city and said, "Hey, you know, we'd really like to get this going, and we'd like to be responsible for our own destiny as far as activations go and promoting Downtown Westminster." And I think that's wonderful. It's a great moment when you can take something that grew up from a little, not a little thing, it was a big thing, and it can stand on its own and then be led and grow. And as Jamie said, the ultimate goal is that these are self-funding, that she will be able to grow sponsorship packages and investment from other private sector folks who see the value in supporting this. But, you know, I think this is important seeding to be done. And as I said, the money is not general fund, it's Downtown funds that were generated by the Downtown for the Downtown. So we believe in hearing this from our private sector, that it's important. I also want to point out, you know, we met last week internally, staff did, with our partners in Parks, Rec, and Libraries, Eric and his event team, and Alex, who I think they're here in the audience, but, and Barbara and other folks in leadership, to talk about, because I want to be really clear, we don't want to duplicate, we don't want to take away. There's no intention to not be incredibly collaborative through this process. We've written those sort of provisions into the contract. We're going to have very close collaboration, check-ins monthly with our events team and with our PRL folks and everyone to make sure that we're on the same page and that we are also, you know, frankly, cross-promoting to help, you know, if we can promote something that's happening, the fireworks at City Park, you know, I think the Chamber is more than happy to do that, and we have that in the contract as well. So I just wanted to make sure I addressed that. And part of the vision plan, as Eric Otzelberger had pointed out to me, was, you know, leveraging partnerships, finding partners to help make activities happen. Events is one way that we can partner and leverage what's already going on and let, in this case, let some of the private sector folks also contribute and be force multipliers for us as we take on this activation work. Next slide, please. So, next steps, we would like to finalize an agreement. We do have an agenda placeholder for the 28th, and that's depending, of course, on the input that we get from this body tonight, as WEDA. To finalize that agreement, we have been working on it, we're almost there, but we want to take this time to get your input into some of these ideas that we've shared with you today and to make sure that we craft that in a way that is acceptable, of course, and beneficial. And also, you know, we do have that better and best scenario. We have money in the Downtown budget to do either or. So if you'd like, we wanted to give you some options. And, next slide, please. And so our staff recommendation is to direct staff to negotiate this agreement and provide staff with your recommendation on the level of activation that you would like us to start this pilot project at. And we also, of course, are open, not just now and not just after we finalize the contract, but we do have flexibility as things come up throughout the year. If there's an idea that you have or some connection or maybe something that, you know, we just haven't thought about, we don't know what we don't know, I think we would have that flexibility throughout the year to say, "Hey, you know what, you should do a pop-up of this," or, you know, whatever that might be. And, you know, I don't mean to speak for Jamie, she can certainly speak for herself and Brian, but, you know, we've had these conversations, and I know that they want to be very nimble and agile and be able to be responsive, so we've written some of that flexibility into the contract as well. So with that, I will stop, and we are all happy to answer any of your questions.
Your pro temp?
Raise my hand really slowly, guys.
She's on jet lag, so beware.
Yeah. Start talking.
If it doesn't make sense, just ask for clarification.
So, one, I'll just start with, I'm really excited about this partnership. I think this is something that we were hoping would happen all along with the Downtown. And, you know, our original vision was that we would have like 200 events a year, and this is just the start. And I'm so grateful that we have partners both with the Chamber and the Downtown Business Association. This is amazing. So thank you for helping to generate this activity. So question about, so one, just clarification on the funding source. So if we're doing this through WEDA, I'm assuming we're just using the URA funds?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I want to be a little more protective of the GID funds and all that it applies toward. Only thoughts that I have is just maybe as this continues to evolve, that we start to think about the relationships with the adjacent businesses, just outside, you know, just on the other side of Harlan or 88th, and because there are some great businesses that have popped up and actually live off of the activity that's in Downtown, and I really love that they are there and that they were so dependent, those commercial areas were so dependent on the activity of the mall and the success of that. So if there's a way to integrate them in, maybe the Downtown's the anchor, right, but to bring them in, let them get some airtime too. And Costco could be a good sponsor. And the only other thing that I was kind of hoping to see a little more of would be just some, you know, picking up on some of the cultural diversity that we have in the city. And, you know, we have some Great Korean restaurants in the market coming soon, and just kind of picking up on, you know, what we already have in the city as cultural resources, and hopefully, we can add that in. we can add that in. With respect to the scale, I'd probably say, you know, when I was reading all the things, like, wow, how are they going to get it all done? But, so I'd be, I'd love to see the $300,000 level, but I think, you know, like, starting with 200,000 and then kind of having it not to exceed so that you do have that flexibility to say, oh, we have this opportunity, and we aren't kind of canceling it out just because we didn't put enough money into the agreement, so.
Counselor Hutt? Yeah, I think it's a really smart investment. The better our businesses do, the better the city does. So I would be good with the 300,000 level.
Camelia?
I'll just say, I am so excited about this. I deeply appreciate that staff and that the Chamber and that our new Downtown Business Association have taken the initiative to work on this so thoroughly. So thank you. This is exactly what I've been most excited about. When I campaigned, my number one priority was how do we activate our spaces better? How do we build a stronger local economy? And I made a very big personal investment by buying a house across from the downtown, hoping that businesses would pop up. And we're getting there, which is really exciting. And I know that our frequent conversation has been around, how do we pick up foot traffic after COVID, which has been slow to regenerate? And so I think that this is exactly what we need to really kind of spur the activity that we need. And I believe that it's what families need, so that, and I've been touting this a lot, but I think it's what families need so that they have free areas to go. They don't have to spend. If you have kids, you can bring them. And I think it's what neighbors and residents need. They have somewhere to go. Like, that's my favorite part of just having more foot traffic, is just hanging out somewhere, going somewhere, reading a book, bumping into neighbors, which is exactly what we need. And then, of course, it helps our businesses because it increases the foot traffic for them. So, for a lot of reasons, I just think that this is 100%. I am so on board. And then I immediately had some ideas around, we have Arts Week coming up, which maybe next year, hopefully, we can incorporate them and make that even bigger for the city, because I really want to, I'm trying to encourage the growth of our arts culture in the city in any way that I can and be helpful. And then to Mayor Protem's point about cultural diversity, you know, we just had that Cultural Center open up last year in southwest Westminster by, you know, Mr. Monkot and some of his partners. And I know that he's trying to spur that on there, but maybe we can partner somehow for southwest Westminster. Not sure what that looks like. All that said, I think for a lot of reasons, this is what we need to do. I did want a clarification on the contract. I just want to know, is this an annual ongoing? Do we wean off year over year? Is this a one year, and then we see what happens next year? Just so folks know, what is the plan?
Thank you, Counselor. Great question. This is a one-year contract, and we would come back with you, come back to you, excuse me, the next year for the next contract. And to evaluate, we're going to have minimum quarterly reporting on metrics such as number of attendees, participation, what businesses, when, where, how much, how much, you know, impressions we receive from a marketing perspective. So all of that will be reported, and then we'd like to come back to you. As I said, you know, this is our first go, our first pilot project with this. So we are hoping to just exceed all expectations and break all of the metrics. But we'd like to have that opportunity to come back to you.
Okay. And then, next question was the ambassador program. What does that include? Can I get more details?
So that would be led by Matt, actually, and he'd be kind of the head ambassador, and it would include other businesses downtown that also sign up to be ambassadors. Very similar to the ambassador role in the Chamber, where they're going out, talking to businesses, talking to residents downtown, and just encouraging that participation and getting the buy-in from the businesses and the residents to come and participate with us.
Okay.
And kind of listening to what those needs are as well. So, you know, going out and surveying businesses, what kind of activities do you want to see down here, and what is your foot traffic like, and how can we help?
So essentially, are we saying that that offloads that work from our staff to, you know, maintain and hopefully ensure that this succeeds? Is that what we're paying for right there?
Yeah, I think that there is some of that. I mean, there's definitely going to be a lot more of that included in this contract.
Right. Okay.
I'm so sorry. If I could just add on to that as well, I wanted to point out, you know, we've started some other collaborations with the Chamber to have staff and Chamber working together. So they have very graciously given us office space in their office. So we have our Economic Development Teams down there, offering small business assistance during regular hours on Wednesdays from 10 to 2. We do have someone staffing down there. And I think that's just another example of helping, you know, good, excellent volunteers, the Business Association, the Chamber, who all want to serve in that ambassador capacity. So we'd love to empower them to do that as well.
Right. Understood. I am often, depending on the project, I like to be somewhat cautious. To Mayor Protem's point, I like that idea. And I am just very deeply committed to what this plan is. And I do feel strongly that this is exactly what we've been looking for. And the city does need the partnership to make this successful. And I'm just very grateful that the Chamber is willing to take that on. So I am in support of the 300,000.
So, to join in, to, if I could, my colleague said it all. I think this is a fantastic idea, concept, it's necessary. And I've said this before, but, you know, downtown reminds me of early Belmar, right, where it took years and years of city investment and place-making for that to actually become self-sustaining. We're talking about a one-year deal here where it's necessary, and we went through COVID, right, a pandemic that set this project back so many years. It's not only necessary for us to do this, but it's the right thing to do, not just for the businesses, but also for the residents. This will create all these new events and things to do, like Counselor Camelia said, right? We need more things to do, especially in that downtown area. And people, I think families will love this, young, old, everyone will love this, and I'm glad that you brought this forward. And I love the concept of proof of, the proof of concept to sustainability model, where you're going to look at ways of becoming sustainable, you know, with the sponsorships and partnerships. So that's a really smart way of doing it and figuring out how to become self-sustaining there. And as we've said, right, this is not a forever thing. The foot traffic, the current state of the foot traffic, it will pick up, not just through this, but there will be more businesses coming in, there will be more housing coming in, there will be more things. So there's opportunity regardless, but this just adds that catalyst, like you said. So thanks for doing this.
I don't know if I'm going to come off as excited. I'm not, not excited, but... First question is, how did we come up with the number? I mean, there's, what was the magic sauce behind 200 or 300, well, not 500? What, you know, what do you think that you could accomplish with that, and why?
I'll go ahead and start, and then I'll hand it over to my, my partner here, Jamie. So practically speaking, it's what we thought we could use within the available URA funds would be available for an activation. So then we started to craft around that number, and then we said, you know what, what if we could do a little bit more and do the best? What's the best scenario here? So we always want to have that higher level of, to aim for. And so we went ahead and populated that. And as far as what can be done with that, we worked very closely with Jamie, and I'll turn it over to Jamie to explain some of those things. They have a lot of experience with events. Also, you know, myself and my team have done those historically and in past, you know, roles in other cities. So just using some of that practical knowledge, and I'll just turn it over to Jamie.
Yeah, so as Lindsay mentioned, they kind of gave us these two numbers to work with. And so the, we can go back a couple slides if possible to see what's included in each of those. These events, I went through, crafted based on our experience, our partners, people that we work with here in Westminster, and what these, what it typically costs to put these types of events on, just kind of budgeted within that framework. So we kind of worked backwards from the number that Lindsay gave us, rather than asking for a particular amount.
That makes sense. My other thought was, there seems like there's some crossovers and some, some events that happened anyway, and that doesn't mean that you couldn't call it 10x those events and make them better. I'm just trying to understand the crossover from like, their Parks and Rec budget, like, is there some offset here? Granted, I understand it's different buckets of money. Just trying to kind of get a full picture for the city as an organization.
Yes. Thank you for the question. We have talked about that, and even as recently as last week, the teams were together and talking about that to make sure there wasn't any sort of overlap or duplication. And as you mentioned, you know, there is a different bucket of money, you know, general fund versus money generated by downtown for downtown to be used in downtown and for downtown benefit. So we just wanted to add on, I think, and be additive. You know, we had a few of these prototype events, I'll call them, as Jamie mentioned, the lighting for downtown, we even, to a smaller extent, the temporary dog park opening, you know, those were great community, neighborhood-level things that the Chamber and the Downtown Business Association were leading. And we were a partner to them, we just supported them through basically in-kind things to help make those successful. And our communications team helped out and promoted things on social, but nothing really so much with the hard cost. So definitely not taking away anything from anybody or any, any part of the city. This is just intended to be additive and to definitely not duplicate any activities.
So one of the things that we've, we've really tried to focus on with, as a Chamber, with our relationship with the city is not duplicating efforts, but amplifying efforts. So if you're doing something well, we want to amplify that. If we're doing something well, we would love for you all to amplify that. I remember there was a time, a few years back, I was walking the businesses in the historic arts district, and I'm going down one direction of the street, and I'm knocking on doors, and I'm talking to businesses about different programs, and I see Economic Development folks, previous administration, I see them walking the other way, and they're talking to the same businesses that I'm talking to. And we could have collaborated and done that in half the time with half the effort, but we were duplicating efforts. And so I think what this partnership does is, allows us to amplify the efforts of the other entity and grow exponentially together. The other, to your first question with the cost, these, these events cost money to put on. One of the benefits of the public-private partnership with the city, working with the Chamber, is we can leverage relationships that we have and sponsorships that we can get, sometimes more effectively or efficiently, and get more event for less cost than maybe the city could do on its own.
I appreciate that. I think, just to, you know, where my mind's coming from, is we pretty frequently have the conversation around our special events. They're not moneymakers, they're not meant to be. Sometimes, though, you know, it's a hard pill to swallow if you really look at what those events cost us. And so for an activation like this, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, you're doing like you say, and I'm not saying you wouldn't, but that that's the goal. The goal is to amplify the downtown. I have a little bit different take, I think, than I've heard here tonight from some of my colleagues as far as the downtown has succeeded in spite of COVID, in spite of a lot of challenges. And, you know, I think that some of us who have been on council, some in the audience prior, took heed for that, because we championed it through hard times. And I think that, you know, we've come out on the right side of history in my mind, that it's continued to succeed. However, there are some areas where I would like to see it succeed better that, you know, didn't fare well through COVID. Some of that is about bringing in some bigger business park kind of development. So I'm hoping, you know, that would be my hope out of this, is that, you know, there's enough buzz that you start seeing like some sort of actual business building, commercial building, because that's really the piece that we're still missing. You know, the housing has continued to come. That buzz has not been able to be trampled by things like COVID. And, you know, we see it with how fast those developments have sold out. So the last thing that I want to kind of understand, too, is, you know, how these dollars are, as an organization, and I don't know how you guys have your, you know, between the downtown district and the Chamber, like, how you account for the dollars. So if these dollars are given to the Chamber, does the business district, do you have separate accounts for them? And then, you know, additionally, as an organization, both from you guys and for the city, how are we trying to put some KPIs around what success looks like? And I'm not saying that you have to be successful with everything that you do, you know, day one, but, you know, the goal is to drive business into the downtown and help the businesses that are there, you know. So how do we, year one, say this worked, this didn't work? You know, year two, if this continues, you know, have you guys put some thought into that? So it's kind of accounting and then KPIs.
I think that's probably part of the contract negotiation. I think there's also precedent for it. So for things like the Shop Local campaign that we've done in conjunction with the city, we've reported back on sales tax dollar increase year over year, those kinds of things. So we, as a Chamber, are used to reporting back to the city, and you all are used to seeing those KPIs from us. So I think, and we've already talked about some of those being in the contract.
Thank you. And also, you know, within the contract, we do have a form that you'll see as an attachment. That will be the monthly or quarterly, that's one thing we're still, we're still working through, but it'll be a metric reporting. And it also allows some narrative space. This has been very successful in other communities where I've worked with nonprofits, to allow them the opportunity to have a narrative section of successes, maybe that weren't tangible. But we do very much have the tangible of numbers, how much economic impact, how many businesses. So that's going to be reported at least, at a minimum quarterly, and with every request for payment that's made. And it also allows them a space to tell us about maybe what challenges there were. You know, who knows? Maybe there's a, I don't know, I don't want to say a tornado rips through downtown, but anyway, something, you know, that happens, and act of God, you know. So we write that down and say, this is why we didn't have anyone attend the food festival, because there was a tornado. You know, it allows them that freedom as well and flexibility. So we are, we're tracking every event on some quantitative metrics, but we also allow some qualitative. And also, an opportunity for the Chamber and the Downtown Business Association to provide us with any other backup documentation, surveys, customer input, comments that they receive. So I think it's a lot of good data to collect, and just want you to know and be assured that that's, that's in the contract, and that is what we would like to bring on the 28th. So you'll be able to see that and talk about that.
So I guess the last thing I would say is, I am supportive of the 300, but, you know, I want, you know, there to be some of those checks and balances, just because I think that they're important. These are tax dollar funds, you know, whether they're general, or whether they're special district or not, they're still tax dollar funds. And, you know, the last thing I'd say is, I think it's a great opportunity, both for the city and the Chamber, to kind of get a little bit more specific with an area, because there's other opportunities in the city for us to look at stuff like that, be it the Promenade or the Orchards. There are other areas, or the TOD, there are other areas that you probably could take some of the lessons learned and apply them for, you know, special districts. And I hope that this includes, I know that we did a special district for events as far as alcohol. I'm assuming that we're going to be able to utilize that with some of these events, because that's why we put it there. And I haven't seen it come to much use yet in the downtown. I know the Orchard has used it some, but, but either way, I appreciate the work put around this, and I look forward to seeing what you guys bring back to us to vote on.
I know you had your hand up, but let me, I'll get my stuff on the table first. Thanks for your presentation. Reading it, my whole head goes around the entire city. And I know that we have things up at the Orchard. They have a massive amount of things that they do. We have, then, this area, we have the city last year put on 81 different things during the year. We have Arts Alliance and Historical Society that have key things that they do during the year. My must-have is, everybody's at the table, everybody, because we're a quarter into this year, so I wasn't going for 300 because a quarter's gone. But everybody needs to sit at that table, get the dates down that we know are there, so that big things, we don't have three big things happening, and we're counterdoing what we want to do. That's only fair to the other areas that have had their businesses struggling and have maybe been there longer. And so, in my head, it's that balancing act. And Counselor Camelia sits on our Arts Alliance at the Metro North, and they do concert series and different things. So you already have... So you already have attachment there and they get SEFD funds and stuff. I don't, they probably have this year already planned out, but that's something for future years. You just need all of those contacts so that you all can work together. Nobody has to go out and reinvent anything. But I just know when you did your tree lighting, it immediately lit up my phone and the entire Historical Society board with, is this then, you're not doing the Historical Society tree lighting? And so we just need to be crystal clear. We have a new website. We have asked that everybody, everything be on that website, but even our town hall, I had heard from somebody, wasn't on there. So that is an absolute must, that everybody, everybody else has their dates for this year and we need those on that calendar. And I do worry about public fatigue and we talked about this last year with Parks and Rec. There's times where families just need to be home together and have time to do whatever they want to do. And 81 things they had last year going on, and I know we're going to talk about that this, tonight, with what they all have going on and with the city stuff. But yeah, everything costs money. And so I had asked, like at the Orchard, and they have, who's the name of the people?
Vestar.
Vestar. They are like our URA, so they're the ones that do everything. So when officers are needed, it's up to them to pay for them. And I would expect out of this money, any of the extra police officers we need is included in this money because it's not in our budget. And so just things like that, my brain's been busy all day writing notes and thinking of things. Because when the mall went blank, we put other things in place in case it stayed dormant forever and we were sustainable financially. So I do not want them to feel like, oh, now we have a downtown. We're chopped liver. That's not the case. There is important, each piece of those are important and the city and our citizens have put taxpayer dollars into each of those. So as long as we can put things on the calendar and not hit on key things that somebody else is planning, already has on the books, I'm okay. But like I said, a quarter's gone, so I was going to go for 200,000.
I was going to clarify on that exactly, thank you. So I made an assumption maybe I should not have. I live by day in the project world and if I get a contract and that says a year, then it would be expiring a year in April next year. So is this the calendar year or?
Thank you, great question. And I'm sorry, Mayor, that we weren't clear with that. But this would be not a calendar year, but 12 months. And we thought this actually would be beneficial because of course more events might ramp up over, starting in October, Halloween and Thanksgiving, Christmas holidays, of course. And to be that bridge into the next year to give us some breathing room, let's assess what worked, what didn't work, and then come back to this body in the spring or late winter and discuss the next, what's next.
Okay, well, you've got your four yeses, so, or four 300,000, so.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Potem.
Just as we collect our data, I just think it would be helpful to understand what it's going to take long-term to feed the downtown. I was joking with Lindsay like earlier that it's like a sourdough starter and you have to feed it every day. Have you ever done one of those? Really annoying, but this is what we've done. You know, we started our sourdough. And just like Vestar knows and, you know, the 73rd Avenue, like vibrancy means you have to put some dollars and energy consistently into this. And so it would be helpful to kind of develop some sort of metric for us to be thinking longer term. What do we need to put into downtown to keep it vibrant? And one random idea, not related to this vibrant thing, that just popped into my head, just when we, in terms of creating opportunities for cross-pollination of businesses, I was thinking like, it's a recycle, you know, like, one, we could have events and if you attend the event, you might get like a dollar off somewhere or whatever. But also just like utilizing what we have in place, like the recycling center, are there opportunities to get some discounts of businesses there? Just to, you know, yes, it's great to have events, but what do we have sitting there that could also act like an event for us?
Thank you very much for those comments. And I would, that's an awesome idea. And especially to be able to bridge across Harlan to the businesses that are over there. We've actually had some initial conversations with them. But Jamie, I think you put together for the dog park something similar to that. I know we had Tappan Burger donated, you know, get a free draft if you went to the dog park opening, you know, or. And I think 365 Pet Vet had some little prizes and things like that. So I think that's just a fantastic idea. And I don't want to speak for Jamie, but I'm sure you'd probably be looking to do more of that in the future.
The only thing else I thought of, and you have brought up food trucks several times. In a way, that saddens me because we should be sharing the people that are there. Food trucks aren't there on a daily basis. And so I'm not hot on food trucks. If you want people to know the restaurants, they need to go in them to, I mean, I tell people about, I can never think of the chicken places. And people end up going for three days out of seven. So have it, so I don't know how you do it, but that's, you want people to be testing their food, not a food truck food. I mean, I understand we have them at Westy Fest and whatnot, but we're not next to restaurants. You've got food down, you've got restaurants trying to survive. I wouldn't put them down there, but I'm not the one organizing it.
Thank you.
One thing, Mayor. One of the ideas that came up at my table at the Budget Town Hall, which I love, is the concept of gamification that goes along with what Mayor Potem is saying. You know how we had the naming contest for our snow piles? People really, really love that, right? Very passionately. And one of your members in the Chamber had a birthday party in '24 and she did a scavenger hunt downtown Westminster that was really successful, right? So I think there's opportunities to gamify the attendance in many ways. People need an escape, especially right now. So if you can figure out that, I think they'd love that.
What's the game that they use their phone and you're looking for things?
Pokemon?
Yeah. Pokemon Go is like, right? And look at the phenomenon that caused just by searching for something, right? So all these businesses we want people to find, you can create games out of that to have people find these businesses.
Yeah, people have found the museum because of that thing, so.
Okay, you need anything else? No, we thank you for the direction, for your time. Thank you very much and we'll see you on the 28th.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Jamie.
That brings us to City Council reports. Counselor Zuddy?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Carmelia?
I wanted to say that, I don't know if it's last weekend anymore or the weekend before, but I had a really successful coffee meeting. And so I just wanted to say thank you to staff because I had a really long list of questions and they went through it. And so I'm sure you all saw those. And that one was in South Westminster, which I hadn't held there and I'm trying to get around the city. And so for folks listening, if you have more suggestions about where I can be, let me know and I'll make that happen. And definitely bring your questions. And again, thank you to staff if you didn't hear that. So appreciate all the folks that went into that. And then I'll just bring up, I'm sure we're all going to bring up the Budget Town Hall. I found that to be extremely successful. I loved the work session format. We did the roundtables again like we did last year. We had a higher turnout this year. And I loved that we had police and fire there. Did we? No, just fire, sorry. But I love that we had folks at our tables that could help bring their insight to the discussion instead of just, you know, my view as a counselor or, you know, city staff's view. I think it's important to have different perspectives from around the city as well as the residents that live from all around the city, just to, you know, help answer questions and drive the conversation. It was deeply insightful and I know that staff caught all the notes and questions that our table had, so I'm not going to worry about those. But thank you for doing that. I think that we're on the right path.
Mr. Potem?
Nothing for me.
Mayor Potem?
I missed all the good stuff last week.
Oh, well, you forgot to talk about Google.
Oh, my goodness.
Google, Google fiber. Sorry, Alberto. We did groundbreaking at the park. Tried not to hurt the grass, but they had already leafletted that neighborhood at 113th and Kendall and got right to work. So that was a funny event and to all, Jody, to you and your staff and everybody that has worked tirelessly, getting to be the second city that they're working in. And I appreciated getting their map because they're going all over the city. They are not just cherry picking, so that's great. Airport tour Saturday was fantastic and it just answered so many questions and tells us exactly why what's happening and why. Because there are very few people that have the authority to do some things at the airport. And it is not the Jefferson County Commissioners, it's not us. FAA runs them and it just was, it couldn't have been better. And I would never have thought three and a half hours would take them that long, but it took every minute, so it was good. And we had the books that, for you guys that weren't able to be there, we delivered them to you, so you have it.
Just curious regarding the quality of the tour. Is that something that they'd be willing to do for some of our concerned resident groups?
Yes, they're looking at opening it up this summer.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can clarify also that we talked to them, to the airport leadership about that and they are working on a program for general members of the public. And I was asked by a member of our community as well, the same question. And so the follow-up is they are working on that and they do expect to roll it out. They are in the process of recruiting for an engagement coordinator. And that would be one of the primary responsibilities of the new engagement coordinator, that and increased transparency for their operations.
They really talked about they're a city within themselves and they're an enterprise fund. So while they're in Jefferson County, their budget is that enterprise and the Commissioners don't touch it. So it was just very fascinating, every aspect of it.
I may expand on that as well, just to emphasize or reemphasize how committed they really seem to be around the engagement. I felt that they deeply understood how important engaging with our community is and for them to be better understood and to really get information out to the community. And so to city manager's point, the director, first of all, seemed, he gave us all the information he could and he was deeply understanding and understand that this is his number one priority and focus and that he was hired specifically as that to be his goal, to really engage the public. And they said that they're bringing on a new hire for community engagement. And that impressed me because their total staff numbers was only 29 folks for the whole airport. And that kind of blew me away that their staff number is so low for FTEs. And then they're going to be spending dollars to bring on somebody just for this cause. And then they also had somebody there who, his main job, I forget exactly what it was, facilities, I think. But he also had a background in city planning and is also involved in this engagement process. And so I just wanted to emphasize that for those listening that the airport definitely understands the asks and they are working on rolling out a plan for tours, for providing information more frequently. And we're here to help encourage them. And I think that they understood and welcomed us in that.
And they have a committee that they're putting together. So anybody listening can go to the Jeffco website and go sign up. They will be looking for community members with all points of view and they will make the decision of putting those together.
Counselor Potem?
Well, just to be specific, it's for the Part 150 noise study that it did start when we had the roundtable going. So that's a, I'm glad to see that that's still coming forward.
Okay. City manager.
All right, I do have a report for this evening. I could have my first slide, thank you. Now my second slide. Thanks, Abby. By way of update, this one is a great update from the youth in our community. And I want to highlight this one, our youth advisory panel. So this is a city panel comprised of members of our youth community, Foster Connections and Build Community. A youth advisory panel member shared that she had observed that her peers in her community were waiting for the bus but hanging out on a utility box because that was the only spot for them to sit. She asked if there was anything that could be done about it and this was done through her work on the panel. So city staff followed up with RTD and over the following months, were successful working with the youth and RTD to get a bus bench installed. And we, I really wanted to highlight this because it does show that our students advocacy does exemplify one of the many ways that our youth members positively impact our community. And of course, each year we look for new members to our youth advisory panel. So this is a bit of a plug for the youth in our community to think about this opportunity for next year because it does make a difference in Westminster. Next slide, please. I want to also update on the number of interactions that we've and presentations we've had from members of our community in our rental housing area. And our rental housing inspection team has been busy. They've received recently positive feedback from residents of the atrium apartments who noted that staff has acted quickly and been very accessible to their concerns. I want to report out as a KPI that in March, the team performed full inspections of every unit that they were allowed to access in that building, which was a total of 106 out of the 112 units. All critical life safety issues have now been corrected, including lack of heat and uncontrollable heat, which we heard about from some of our speakers, and that the team is continuing to follow up on the other issues found and is in the process, if necessary, of assessing fines if those other issues are not corrected within the timeframe. And I want to also highlight that this is important for two reasons. One is we are responding to our community when they do speak here to us. And I also want to highlight that we're using this opportunity with the atrium to do better. So we are reexamining how we're structuring our inspection services in this program. And we are in the midst of restructuring. And a lot of that restructuring is driven by our experience with this particular community. So mostly, we wanted to thank the staff in those neighborhoods, particularly in the atrium apartments, who did have the courage to come in and speak with us and speak to city council and that we are following up directly and in fact, restructuring the way we're doing this whole program based on our experience with them. Next slide, please. I also want to update this one. City Park, we talked about downtown just a little while ago tonight. The City Park in downtown Westminster, as you've probably all noticed, is actively under construction. And that's moving forward right on schedule with substantial completion schedule for November of this year. Now, November is a terrible time to get landscape seeded in the Front Range of Colorado. So we're not planning a community celebration until that's been done and that will be in spring of 2026, once our landscaping is in place. The park itself will be completed in November of this year. So staff will be inviting city council for a hard hat tour in late June, early July. And then we'll check in with you as to what the best time to schedule that hard hat tour will be. But if you, you don't need to go onsite, you can go anytime and check out the progress. It's really shaping, taking shape before your eyes right now, quickly, yes, very quickly. Next slide, please. Tonight's agenda, we're into it. The first one was the WIDA study session and that's moved forward with respect to direction from city council on the partnership between the Westminster Economic Development Authority and the Westminster Chamber of Commerce for activation downtown. In our city council study session, which is now, I have four information-only items on the agenda tonight, any one of which we can discuss based on city council's questions or such after my presentation, Mayor. The first one is the 2025 Pride Event and Partnership Opportunity. The second is our 2024 Sustainability Plan Report. So that's the report out from our successes in 2024 measured against our plan on sustainability. The third one is official city positions taken on legislation being considered by the Colorado General Assembly. And then the fourth information-only memorandum is recommended updates to strategic plan objectives. And that's a follow-up to the city council study session that Saturday in February where we received direction. Next slide, please. Also on tonight's agenda are four presentations. The mid-session update of the 2025 State Legislative Session is first. Next will be the 2025 City Council Engagement Calendar, which we talked a little bit about earlier. Will be followed by the Chief of Staff's Office Budget Presentation. So this is our last. So this is our last departmental budget presentation for city council as we head into the budget building process with you. And so this wraps up our final departmental presentation. And finally, a presentation on initial priorities for 2026 budget development. So starting to get the building block ideas from you moving forward into that process. And then there is a final executive session this evening, which is discussion of a personnel matter, and that's the quarterly check-in for the presiding judge. Next slide, please. This week, there are things happening here at City Hall and in the city. On Tuesday, tomorrow night, it is a planning commission meeting that's scheduled at seven o'clock right next door to us here in the city council chambers. On Wednesday night, two meetings. The inclusivity board is meeting at six o'clock, and that's a hybrid meeting at City Hall, the Pikes Peak Conference Room here, or teams participation. And then, as I mentioned a little bit ago, the youth advisory panel itself is meeting at six o'clock until 7:30, and that's here in City Hall in the Colorado River Room. On Thursday this week, the Parks, Recreation and Libraries Open Space Advisory Board is meeting. That's at six o'clock at the Westminster Sports Center. And on Saturday this week, April 12th, there are two things happening. The Car Seat Clinic, which starts at 8:30 and runs through till noon, that's at fire station number two, and that's a fantastic public service that our fire professionals provide for anybody looking to get a car seat installed in their, a car seat safely installed and correctly installed in their vehicles, and then how to remove and put them back in safely. And also on Saturday is the city's annual adult egg hunt, which starts at three o'clock at the Walnut Creek Gulf Preserve. Next slide, please. So at our next meeting, it is going to be a busy night for us. That's on Monday, April 14th, and that will begin at 6:30 right here in the city council chambers. Three presentations. One will be recognition of the 2025 Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Award nominees. Second will be proclamation designating April as Donate Life Month. And third will be proclamation for National Volunteer Week and very timely recognizing volunteers nationally. Two information-only items will be in the packet, the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Biennial Report. That's a report on our comprehensive plan and how we're doing there. And then secondly will be an update on the Woman Creek Reservoir Authority Property Agreement with Jefferson County. We will have a consent agenda that has seven items on it, and that will include two second readings. And finally, public hearings. There will be one which is the public hearing and first reading of Counselor's Bill Number Seven regarding Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Consideration of a PDP Amendment for Uplands Filing Three, Block One, Tract A and Block Three. This is the one that was to happen at the last city council meeting, but was continued to date certain, which is this date, April 14th. So for the public's benefit, that one is happening next Monday. Next slide, please. Also, we have a public hearing and first reading of Counselor's Bill Number Ten, and that's regarding cleanup amendments to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Those are housekeeping items for new business. There are two items. There's a bill which is first reading for supplemental appropriation of funds to the 2025 General Capital Improvement Fund for the North Huron Urban Renewal Area Fire Station Project. The second one is city council discussion directing staff on an ordinance to ban the sale of live animals in pet shops in the city. We've received inquiries about that, so that is coming forward on the 14th. And then we have under old business and passage of ordinance on second reading, the second reading of the Bill Number Nine Regarding Proposed Development Assistance with Maker Housing Partners involving proposed affordable housing development located in Uplands at 2880 West 88th Avenue. There will be an executive session that night, which is discussion of a personnel matter, which is the quarterly check-in for the city attorney. Next slide, please. And finally, WIDA meeting also that night, public hearing and resolution regarding supplemental appropriation to the 2025 WIDA budget to reimburse costs to the General Capital Improvement Fund associated with the improvements in the North Huron Urban Renewal Area. So there's two the same night, one for city council, one for WIDA. Next slide, please. You can reach me anytime, 303-658-2003, or jandrews@westminsterco.gov. Follow the city on any one of our four social media accounts, Facebook, Instagram, X, and Nextdoor. That's all I have.
Okay, questions? Counselor Zadi.
What is the plan for the Central Park between November and spring? I'm concerned that if it's not finished, but it appears to be finished to the public, and they see it's not landscaped and, you know, will it still look like a construction site so people know it's not, that's not the final product until it's, you know, I'm just worried about the perception.
Thank you, that's a great question. I'm going to ask our Acting Director of Parks, Recreation and Libraries to talk about that time between November and spring when we get all the landscape seeded.
Hello, Eric Otzelberger, Acting Parks, Recreation and Libraries Director. Counselor Zadi, we're expecting substantial completion and there will be usability. So, you know, it's just, you know, we'll be thoughtful to make sure that the maximum amount of the park can be utilized in a safe and non-destructive manner, but just understanding there will be likely punch list items and other things that, you know, will be better handled in the spring and then, you know, full use and recognition will be done. So like the main central area where you'll have turf and areas where, you know, folks can play, throw a frisbee, things like that, you know, those sorts of things should be able to be used, of course, the walkways and other things like that. So as my engineering friends have taught me over the years, you know, substantial completion is an important thing where, you know, you get as much done as you can safely, but just understand that there'll probably be a few odds and ends to take care of in the spring.
There will be turf, there will be, it will look pretty, is my point.
It will look pretty.
It will look pretty.
It will look pretty. There, and there's a combination of turf and artificial turf, just for, you know, to kind of break up their breakout areas. It's a very thoughtful, very engaging area. Play structure should be there and things of that nature. So it should be highly usable.
Thanks.
Counselor Camilio.
I just wanted to highlight the item for Saturday on the car seat event that the fire department is putting on. For parents, I'll just reemphasize, we're doing a car seat installation training on Saturday, and I, you might think that that is intuitive, and it is not if you've ever done it. And even for folks who have been parents before, maybe it's time to brush up and go again. I just encourage that because the laws are always changing on good advice and how you do that. And even just from year to year, sometimes, just one or two years later, things can be different and advice can be different. So I think that's a great event that we do. Thank you to the city and to our fire department for doing it, and everyone should get a brush up.
Yeah. So I had a bunch of questions that staff did answer, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Just with the answer for the Pride Event, so my question was, the Pride Event that we're holding this year, the great partnership with the Butterfly Pavilion, it's an adult-only Pride Event, and so my question was, you know, is it possible to get something that's more family-friendly associated with this Pride Event? So that, I know that staff said that they would look at opportunities next year. My question came around, just, you said you were speaking with other potential partners like Adams County, Thornton, Northland and Broomfield, who already have some more well-established Pride Events, and I was just kind of curious, they weren't as excited to partner, or, you know, what, what were the conversations like? Or is it better for us to just pursue something on our own? Is that the outcome there?
That's it. Thank you for the questions, Mayor Protam. I had a couple of things, and then Mr. Otzelberger may be able to help as well with this answer. The Pride Event partnership with the Butterfly Pavilion, this is their second time only for conducting this event, and they were very excited when the city staff started working with them based on council's direction to look at a partnership this year. So I think that their ask was that they could continue forward with what they learned from last year and have us help them with it this year, and then we would build towards looking at for next year, a potential expansion to include family, a family portion at the front. But it was just too much to bite off this year for that partnership because the event is actually coming up pretty soon with Pride Month. The second part, though, is with the partners around us. And one of the things that staff noticed as they started working with the other partners is that it didn't feel very local for Westminster, in that they were, Adams County's event is very far away from here. Even the Broomfield event is quite far from here. The Northland event is quite far from here. And so in looking at that, that's where that lukewarm part came from. So staff is hopeful that we can continue to work and build momentum toward Westminster event. And the Butterfly Pavilion being our strong cultural attraction, recently reconfirming its commitment to Westminster, that we thought that that was a win-win for our community with a build towards some family. Now, having said all of that, we are looking very strongly to promote all the other events happening around us on our website at the same time. So promote the Butterfly Event, the, all of the activities in Pride Month, and then also specifically direct people to times and places where the other events are occurring.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Jody stated it very well, and I just want to be clear, Alex Reeves and our special event team and their engagement with our important partners at the Butterfly Pavilion, they are very excited about this partnership, and some of it was just lead time. You know, in the special event world, the mayor referenced it, there's just a lot of logistics and planning out. So conceptually, there's excitement and interest in enhancing an event with the Butterfly Pavilion that's local here for 2026, that would be an expanded scope to have a family component.
Okay. Thank you all for... I've said the same thing about the adult Easter egg. Where's family? But... Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Thanks. Next, we have mid-season update of the 2025 Legislative Session. We can't, we're holding our breath. What happened today?
I'll turn it over quickly so Amy can give you the lowdown. Aaron's Attorney, Policy and Budget Administrator. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, City Council. Tonight, Amy Atwood of Atwood Public Affairs, the city's contracted state lobbyist, is here to share a session update and answer any questions. Regular session of the 75th General Assembly began on January 8th and is scheduled to adjourn on May 7th. Currently, the city has taken 14 official positions, and we're tracking over 100 bills. Our full list of the state legislative bills that the city is tracking as part of 2025 session, along with all official positions that have been taken, can be found on the legislative page located in the City Council section of our webpage. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Atwood.
Great, thank you. Amy Atwood, contract lobbyist with the city. So we're more than halfway. We're three quarters of the way through. We just had our 90th day today of the session, so we have 30 days to go out of the 120 days. Like Aaron said, we're, we have actively reviewed, had staff look at 147 bills. There have been 604 bills so far introduced. That is about 100 less than last year. And in previous years, we've been between 7 and 750. So it really is a decreased amount of bills, and that's because of the state budget. So I'd like to go into the state budget. We had hoped that the budget would have passed by today, but they are running behind in getting the budget passed. Usually, it is finished by the end of the first week of April. We went into the year with down $1.3 billion, so just keeping current obligations, it was $1.3 billion. So the Joint Budget Committee has been busy since November putting together the state budget, and they did find places to pull money from, grant programs. They also did a lot of transfers and sweeps, so of cash funds, they did a lot of sweeps. So if there was money sitting in cash funds, those have been swept and used. The, finding out exactly what the local government impact of that is, I'm working really closely with CML on that. We've been working all week. We worked all last week on it, and we really have to dig and dig and dig to get into it. And we have experts, both I have experts that work on the budget as well as CML has experts, so we want to make sure that you have a really comprehensive list to know what does it look like for local governments. So just know, we're still working on that, and you will get that. The budget has dominated the session. It's no question that it's dominated. And it's not that revenues have gone down in the state. Revenues are still, continue to grow, the state, the state revenues continue to grow, but so do those obligations. And in particular, there are three, Medicaid, Higher Ed and K-12 Education, all three of which, even under this tight budget year, have seen increases. So K-12, Medicaid and Higher Ed, all three saw increases in the state budget. So they did do a lot of shifting and prioritizing. This was also a year where we knew this was coming, the cliff was coming because of ARPA dollars and that those dollars had to be sent, spent or transferred. And that was, that was a big part of last year's budget was transferring money. But right now, HUTF is one of the major funds that the city utilizes, and that right now it has not been touched. That is still intact, running just like it, just like it should be. So the budget did go through the House, it went through the House, I'm sorry, the Senate last week. It came over to the House today. They read it across what they call the desk, had its first reading today, and it will go through its process this week. We do expect there to be more debate, so it may not pass by the end of this week. There are more members in the House than there are in the Senate, so we always anticipate really double the amount of amendments and debating. So we may not see it finish this week. What that does, though, is it compresses all of the bills that are still outstanding, which are just under, it's like 450 bills that are still, no, it's about 400 bills that are still outstanding out of 600. And not all have a fiscal impact, but a lot do, and that only gives three weeks. So at the end of this week, we have four weeks come this Wednesday. And so that means very long committee hearings, but it also means that bills that don't have a fiscal note have a very good chance of passing. And bills that do have a fiscal note, the Joint Budget Committee gave the other 94 members $7.5 million to split up amongst themselves and the governor. So $7.5 million does not go very far, and it'll be interesting to see what makes it and what doesn't make it. So when we look at bills of interest to the city, we know that construction defects has been a priority for the city over a number of years. This year, we have another, we had two bills, we have two. One has already been postponed indefinitely, it's already died, and there is one still working through the process that is Representative Byrd's Many, 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 Many Amendments. And it did pass out of the House, it's on its way right now to the Senate to be debated in the Senate, and there are still more amendments to come. And so there's, it's hard to even say where the bill is in this, at this point, because you have, really, nobody's happy with the bill. So it's, it's an interesting position to be in. We'll see what comes out, but right now, the bottom line is, a builder does not have, the builder has the choice to use the protections in the bill or not use the protections in the bill. So it doesn't cover all multifamily housing, it does not cover all residential or condos. It really is based on what the builder decides that they want to do and if they do want the protections that are in the bill. Now, what those protections are, that's what's still really being negotiated, so we'll see how that one ends up. Another one is what's been called Yigby S, Yes in God's Backyard and Schools. Its proper name is Housing Developments on Faith and Educational Lands. That one, you took an opposed position on. It is a local control issue and says that if it, if it is a parcel that is owned by a school district or a church... a school district or a church, faith-based organization, up to five acres, that they can build on that, and it's fast-tracked. You can't, you can't deny the land use permit for that to be housing. Now, there is an affordability component that was amended into the bill, but at the end of the day, it's still encroachment on local control. And that too has just moved over into the Senate. I'm just gonna hit on some of them. General Government. This is the Workers' Compensation Bill, House Bill 1300, that a position was just taken today in oppose. We had a lot of staff feedback on this one. It has been amended quite a bit. It has a very, very long list of opponents from public entities like municipalities to private business, to school districts, really the whole, the whole spectrum, because it, it is an unfunded mandate. And it is, the workman's comp process and protocols within workman's comp really have not been in question over the last few years. So this is a bill that it's, it's good that council took a position to have your voice. It likely will have a hard time passing as it continues through, and it'll continue through in the Senate.
Did anyone oppose it or support it?
There was one union that supported it, that brought it forward. Protecting Workers From Extreme Temperatures. This was 1286. This is a bill that you would have seen, but it was postponed indefinitely fairly quickly. And it, how it would have impacted the city, because we may see it come back, how it would have impacted the city has to do with extreme temperatures on both ends. And if it gets over a certain temperature, what employees, I don't want to say rights, but procedures that employees are given to bring them indoors, water to cool down, and then also on the other end, on extreme cold temperatures. So that's when we may see that comes back. We are an OSHA state, and we are governed under OSHA, but there's still some question even about that. Municipal Courts. We have a lot of bills in municipal courts, and the judge has been, yeah, over, has been very engaged again this year and made significant progress with bills and amending bills and making some bad bills better. And we're, we're still working our way through all of them. But no, Westminster again is at the forefront. We are looked at and by different groups. The Freedom Foundation comes to us because Westminster is respected and works well, plays well in the sandbox. And same with the domestic violence and victims groups. They too come because really of the work that the judge has done and building those relationships and the respect that is given during those conversations.
Are there, just a question. Are there any that we're specifically concerned about?
Yes, so there is one, 1147, Fairness and Transparency in Municipal Courts. Did I say, yeah, 1147? If we're gonna get really in depth, I need to call him up. So the bill modifies how exemptions may be applied in live-streamed court proceedings, clarifies and sets additional requirements regarding court-appointed counsel in municipal courts, and aligns sentencing and penalties for municipal offenses to state offenses.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Jason Montine, Presiding Judge. I think, well, Amy just outlined all of the things that the, the bill addresses, so I'm happy to try to answer any questions that, that I can. It's been referred to as the Omnibus Municipal Court Bill because it touches a lot of aspects of municipal court, from how indigent defense counsel is appointed to live streaming of all court proceedings. The largest part of the bill and the part that has gotten the, the most talk is the part that would tie municipal sentencing to state sentencing. So if the state court maximum, for instance, for all petty offenses, thefts less than $300, trespassing offenses like that, the state maximum was reduced in the last couple of years to 10 days in jail. And if that were to, if the bill were to pass, then municipal cases involving comparable offenses would be limited to that same 10 days in jail. That would be the, the largest impact on, on our court from a sentencing perspective. That limit would also apply to municipal offenses where there is no state equivalent. Any case where there is a misdemeanor equivalent in the state system, we would likewise be tied to that sentencing maximum, but the state maximum for, depending on the level of misdemeanor, is between 120 days and 364.
Do we feel like there's not gonna be much budging on that? Or how's it going? Is it likely to pass?
I can say that there's been a lot of discussion, and what the municipal judges have been involved in primarily has been a discussion on the procedural aspects of that bill, the impact it would have on live streaming, the appointment of counsel, weekend court requirements, things like that. We have not been involved in the conversation around sentencing guidelines because in my mind particularly, that's, that's a legislative city council function about what sentences should be, and then it's the court's obligation to enforce those. But there, so I have been involved in lots of conversations around the procedural aspects. There have been changes to the bill to address some of those concerns. As it relates to the sentencing structure, from just what I've heard through talking with, with Amy and others, is that, that there's not going to be much movement there as the bill continues through the process.
Thank you. Thank you for...
What about the Supreme Court case on that? Isn't that the same, same issue?
Yeah, if I could, I, I don't want to put the judge in the middle of that, but yes, the matter is before the Supreme Court, and yes, arguments are scheduled for May 12th, and Westminster is involved in one of those cases. The city of Aurora is involved in the other that I'm aware of. So we do expect the Supreme Court to take up that question. And one of the questions for the legislature was whether or not to wait for the Supreme Court to consider the issue. So I don't know whether that's likely the, the result of, you know, whether the legislature's going to wait or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding that question, it's all a timing issue because we have 30 days left, and to get a decision within the next 30 days, I think is fairly unlikely. And so the bill, the bill will go through.
And who is the sponsor?
I'm phoning a friend. Oh, Mabry, Valesco, it's a House bill. Mabry, Valesco, and then the Senate is Mabley and Weisman.
Thanks.
And then lastly, before questions, so Prop 130. This was the law enforcement, 350 million out of the general fund for law enforcement. That was Prop 130 that passed in November. That is part of the $1.3 billion hole that the state is in. The Joint Budget Committee did not take up a bill to fund that. There was a lot of discussion if they would do it or if they would have someone else. So when the Joint Budget Committee brings a bill, it typically is unanimous. It's a 6-0 bill that they vote on. They didn't take it up because, two-part, it's tough on the budget, and there are others in the legislature that are more versed in this, in how, how the money should be spent. So the discussions have also been around putting together a task force or a working group, because the proposition didn't say how the money was supposed to be spent or when the money was supposed to be spent. So it could be 35 million over 10 years. It could take 20 years. It could be a big chunk. So that's where putting together a working group to look at specific projects, that's, I think that is the bill that we are likely going to see, and part of the 350 million will be setting up that interim committee, that year-round committee. I can imagine that it will be a year-round committee, like Transportation Legislative Review Committee is a year-round committee to, because it's going to take a long time to spend down that money. Okay. So with that, if you have any questions?
Make it easy. Well, and getting the bills that we work on with that briefing and stuff really helps know pros and cons of what's going on and...
Good, good. I think our Monday morning meetings...
And I've enjoyed the calls we've had on Mondays, you, even when you're tired. But those have really helped because we can clarify and ask questions.
And I'd like to say that we hear then too what meetings you're going to and what's being reported back in, which that was, that was part of the communication that we felt could be strengthened. And so I think that that, on my side and staff's side, it's helping.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
30 more days, take your vitamins.
That's right.
Okay. Everybody doing okay? Engagement calendar.
I think we have Mr. Andy Le, he's gonna come right on in.
I brought copies of the public engagement calendar and the, um, and the special events calendar, if that's helpful.
Very.
Thank you, Jody. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and city councilors. My name's Andy Le, and I serve as the city's communications manager. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Acting Director Eric Otzberger and I are here tonight to engage with you and seek your feedback on several key items. Last Thursday's Budget Town Hall, the proposed city council engagement calendar, the potential inclusion of parks, recreation, and libraries, special events, and the council's official engagement calendar, and your general input on how staff can better support city councils' communications and community engagement efforts. Your directions and insights are essential as we continue refining our engagement approach to ensure it remains relevant, effective, and closely aligned with your strategic priorities. In response to the guidance council provided back in October of 2024, staff has developed a refined council engagement calendar that reflects your strategic goals, including a focus on targeted outreach to homeowners associations, teen residents, and the business community. We've also made significant efforts to make town halls and listening sessions more inclusive and accessible. These efforts include simultaneous Spanish translation, offering free food and refreshments for attendees coming directly from work or school, and free childcare to better support young families. This evening, we are seeking council's direction on the specific decision points on the far-right column of the proposed calendar. In addition, Director Otzberger has provided a list of special events for your consideration should council wish staff is prepared to incorporate these events into the official engagement calendar. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to hearing your feedback.
So the first one, I see that you need quest or answers on, hopefully everybody has their calendar, the community listening session in downtown Westminster Business Life Camp either Tuesday or Wednesday. Do you know what time they're looking at?
It's in the evening. We, we can make that work. The, the date is the item that we are looking, the direction on.
I can't do the 13th. I can do the 14th.
14th is my yappers.
I'm okay for both.
I prefer the 13th.
I can't do Tuesdays.
Tuesdays are hard for me.
14th? Going, going, 14th. Is that okay? And then the next thing I see you need a question on is the Town Hall for Quality of Life, HOAs in public. It's gonna be somewhere in the central area, and you have four dates for us.
And the format, it's kind of, it's important as well. The, we're going to invite the HOAs and their elected bodies. Some of the, we're gonna cull through that list, some of it, the lists are kind of uneven, but we also can't restrict the public from attending. So the challenges that we're trying to think through and we're seeking council's guidance on is, is it a forum where everyone sort of asks HOA-specific questions? Or is it breakout sessions where we, where we sort of show, here are all the services and amenities that we provide to HOAs? And there's, there are smaller breakout groups where residents can sort of move around and learn about the different city services that we offer.
Well, and as you were talking about that, for the third of the city that doesn't have HOAs, we need something to help them, because Countryside did this. Dave's got some good stuff that has happened over there in the years, and they did get a group together. It's not an HOA, but they got residents together, and you got some grants, didn't you, for the entrances and stuff?
They did some different work on them.
Yeah, so just taking some of those things that people, other areas that aren't HOAs have done, that they aren't excluded from the, the grants and stuff, and maybe how to go about having a neighborhood meeting or...
Got it.
Do you want a forum where they can hop around and learn on all aspects, or what do you want?
And so a workshop would be, would we consider the Budget Town Hall a workshop? Is that what that looks like? Or...
It, it would be something closer to that, but we, when we spoke to our colleagues in CS, they were all on board about, is there, again, we're, we're, I don't want to spitball too many things, but is there a, a table where we talk to HOAs about how do we provide subsidies for water-wise areas, lawn conversions, what other services that are we able to sort of support HOAs with? This came out of the October 2024 conversation, and right around then, I think we were talking about prairie dogs and Stratford Lakes. So what other things can we bring to bear so HOAs know that, you know, we're here to help them?
Would one of the things be ADUs and have that conversation?
Could be, yeah. That's what I'm trying to figure out, like for quality of life, like what's our, are we seeking a definition of what makes high quality of life from our HOA communities and the public? Like what are we, I guess, what are we trying, what information are we trying to get? And that might actually help us structure the...
I think, I guess there's two things. One, I think Counsel Ireland drove the, the desire for HOA, an HOA outreach specific event. And secondly, this, I think we've been working on, how do we better engage HOAs for the past three or four years, the entire time that I've been here? And maybe this is how we start that conversation. We, instead of us trying to figure it out, we invite HOAs to come in, and they tell us, how do we reorganize the, what we do to better support them? I think there's, there's a, there's a push and pull on both sides of it.
Yeah, I feel like the ones that I've heard from are just, are very, their pain points are, you know, just the, the increasing costs that they're... that they're dealing with all over the place and how can they reduce costs? So I think that's a pretty common thing that we've heard from HOAs. So maybe it is being pretty targeted with that kind of push and pull. I mean, obviously improvements, sort of like neighborhood improvements too and probably like code enforcement, I don't like to name all the ones that we've heard. So maybe it can be pretty targeted because we have to think about, what time is this coming, July? We want some sort of, also, we'll probably already have a budget implication for, you know, our neighborhood support before this, so.
I think making people aware that this program even exists would be a positive move in the right direction. Like what are those services that we can provide and maybe there are services that we haven't provided that maybe council would be made aware of.
And I would add in, you know, by way of where this, part of where this is originating is, there were some common, there have been some common issues emerging among our HOAs, one of which you described escalating costs, landscaping, maintenance and such. Another big one is HOAs adjacent to open space and park space are encountering prairie dog issues. So we've been re-examining and recreating. What we noticed at the staff level is that we're often re-making the wheel each time we go and work with an HOA. So we thought as part of what Council Ireland had suggested and council discussed, was building this into a share session partly so that the HOAs can share, have common bond of common challenges they're facing and the city staff can be there to start to think about common solutions. And so that might be a more efficient way for us to start to come together with the HOAs. That was kind of the thinking. I think the quality of life reference is the strategic plan reference, if I'm not mistaken, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Is the sharing thing, which one is that, forum or workshop, what you just described?
I would believe it's the workshop. A forum would be, again, these are just my words, but it would be more us. The way that we, our older model, which was HOAs come in and just, all kinds of questions and without the sort of education, foundational education building that I think would be really helpful.
And so a workshop format in that case would be, one of the first things could be identification of issues and then identification of shared issues and then even perhaps an identification of shared interests that HOAs would have. And the city would participate through that and then get into maybe some problem solving, some ways to streamline services. We could identify gaps that where the city is not stepping up to meet the needs and maybe some areas of redundancy where we don't, when we're overdoing it, we can back out a little bit, for example.
I'll say that hearing the goals of this Town Hall definitely makes me align more with the forum because I think that what I, I agree, I'm education first and I do not believe that individuals will be shy in bringing up, you know, any questions or issues that they may have. And then, of course, at each session or table or booth, I'm assuming that we have a way for them to, that we're gathering that information and feedback from them anyway. But I do think that the priority right now should be a forum so that people know exactly what we have to offer, to your point.
Council Camelia, I think you're describing what we're calling a workshop.
Oh, never mind. I guess I'm really confused then. I thought we said a forum would be to-
The Budget Town Hall would be more of a workshop where there's like small groups.
So not that, right? We want education first. What would that be?
I believe we educated the other night.
Yeah, okay.
And you can spend X amount of time, just like we had the speakers talk. That was the education part.
Yeah.
And then we had the-
Perfect.
Listening and letting them share.
So is that our combined method? I guess I'm still confused then. I thought I was straight, but now I'm not.
I'm in favor of that format where we educate in the beginning, like the community sessions do that too, right? Where the people really like that and, but the original idea of these HOA, this meeting, was to hear from them, not to be, not for them to be told what we're doing. It's really the other way around. So I like that format of workshop.
I agree with the workshop.
Okay, workshop. Now look at your calendars for dates, because I'm sure we'll hit some vacations.
Twenty-four.
Good with twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-nine.
You saying you can't do twenty-four or you can?
I can do twenty-four. I can't do Tuesdays. I work at the family pizza place on a Tuesday night.
I can do twenty-four as well and only twenty-four, actually.
I like the twenty-fourth away because I think the tenth is too close to the Fourth of July holiday. You're gonna have, you're gonna miss a lot of people.
I can do the twenty-fourth.
I might be out of town on the twenty-fourth, so.
Traveler.
Well-ish, out of office.
Okay, sounds like the twenty-fourth. The Town Hall opportunity in the South Pole, access to opportunity at the MAC. You have a preferred date.
That's the MAC's preferred date. The other dates bump up against other programming.
Okay.
There's a Zumba class, I'm told it's very popular. We don't wanna challenge.
There's a lot of Taekwondo too.
Okay, twenty-fourth, fine. Okay, twenty-fourth. And then can you explain what the topic is?
It's opportunity and affordability. This is, again, all the sort of social services, sorry, all the city services that we offer to the community. We're gonna tailor it specifically to the senior community and Historic Westminster community. I think we've heard time and again that like we need to keep engaging our residents on the historic side of the city and sort of emphasize the amount of investment that's happening in the city and more importantly, hearing where are we, what, where are the gaps? What other things can we do? We're specifically thinking about doing outreach to the maker community as well since they're adjacent to that area.
Cool. Okay, the next piece I see is-
Maybe do they want to choose forum or workshop?
Oh. And again, can you in three words or less for each one define them, please? What is a forum? Is that the open questions?
Yeah, open forums is open question. It's the, what the mayor would describe as we're all ears. Is that accurate, Mayor?
No, but it's okay.
More what we did last year.
We did all ears at the Westie Fest.
I, that was before my time.
But the forums were like at the schools and when we went to Westminster Public School.
Okay, thank you.
Those were forums.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, councillor Demott, apparently. I don't know what either of these things are.
Well, in that case, I'm always for a workshop.
Okay, then with Eric's list of things. You need to decide what things council wants to be in. Especially like the Westie Fest, do you want table and reman it? So that somebody's always there to answer questions and talk to the public. July fourth, do you want, we usually meet at six something to just kick off and then let them do their thing. We've done the summer block party down in Historic Westminster. And then do we wanna pick a movie or not? Doesn't mean any of us can't go to any of these. It's just you want a council presence.
Maybe the one with the most attendance?
Good point.
Legacy, we didn't go there last year. Do that this year?
Or do you think we?
Eight twenty-nine, I don't know what date that is.
I was gonna say, if we went down to Westie High School, would we somehow draw more people there with our, with our presence? But that was like, yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Well, and they've got the summer block party always close to that one, so. Not when they, you know, have fourteen hundred people or more.
Legacy bridges are Friday.
Are these not, are these not all Fridays?
Which one?
Are these all Fridays, the movie?
Usually are. The twenty-ninth is a Friday, August twenty.
I might be on vacation, but that's okay. Because it's Labor Day weekend. So that's usually the weekend we go to Nantucket. Because I don't have a meeting.
The twenty-ninth, well, I mean, the twenty-ninth works.
Okay. And then do, should we ask for Armed Services Day? Summer block party at, down in Historic Westminster, yes or no?
That's usually a good one in my mind.
Yeah, I would agree.
Top Taco?
We usually just go hang out with that one and do the taste testing, play judge.
Yeah, we don't have a, so those kinds of things, Eric, we would, like if we get an invitation to, but we won't have a table.
Yes, and Mayor and council, if it's helpful, just baselining, at least historically, as far as comments or Mayor or council comments or speeches, we have coming up the adult egg hunt, which is the all-important bonnet contest judging, which I believe councillor Ireland has signed up to do.
I've done that before.
And Mayor McNally, armed forces event, Veterans Day, Fourth of July holiday lighting typically have some sort of direct, you know, speaking role or things of that nature. To councillor Demott's point, council gets tickets to Top Taco, Brew Fest and absent the bonnet contest for the egg hunt, so those are more, okay, you can attend, chill out.
To me, all these are status quo. I think the big question was, do we want to continue to do tables at the movie night? Because we, staff was putting tables out and we weren't showing up.
Right.
So that's, and it was a lot of different ones, so to narrow it down, I think is good.
So if you wanna do the Legacy on August twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
I can do that.
Need to know it's on calendars, so it doesn't sit empty.
Yep.
Same with the block party. They always love the handouts. I don't know what, if we still have Frisbees to hand out or something new this year, but they like that. I know at the Pride Partnership, I saw that somebody from council could speak and I'm gonna be up at CML. So are you gonna be around?
I'll be around.
Okay, then you can do that for us.
Happy to, you know, Amber or somebody else as well, but I don't wanna hog it.
Let me know. Okay, we can talk about it.
Okay.
On that one, we could make room for anybody, I think, who would like to speak from city council at the Pride Partnership. Just let us know.
I'm up at CML, so I won't be here. Fourth of July, will just tell us when to be there. I know we don't have to be there at four. Usually it's five forty-five. Just remind us. And then Westie Fest, you want a table?
If I may make my suggestion from Westie Fest, last year I did the tabling and the tabling, the folks that came there seemed to be very, they had kind of direct questions and we took them down and that's helpful. So I feel like maybe there is a city table, but I felt that I was more useful or maybe council was more useful visiting all of the other city booths. When I was visiting a city booth, I felt like I had more interaction with the community and one-off conversations about things that they might be excited to see a councillor there. And I felt like at the booth that was just city, I felt like they didn't underst, the folks that visited, I felt like there were different intentions and the folks that visited that booth. I don't feel like they knew really who I was and they didn't really need or want an interaction. So I would say hi, I tried to interaction, you know, introduce myself, but I got a lot less out of that than when I wandered around some, in general, and wandered the other booths. So I just wondered if that was via suggestion to just have us be there, but maybe like be involved in all of the other, because there were so many different city booths. There was the arts one and the environmental one and the, I don't even know how many others, the libraries.
That's the reason we tried to do it in time zones, so you could go and see everything else.
Right.
But while I was working the booth, gosh, great interaction, brand-new people. They watch so they could name everybody at the booth and it was pretty fantastic.
Okay, maybe it was the time I was there. I didn't feel very useful. But I did help out the staff that was there a lot, so I can do that, but that was just my feedback.
Yeah, your name to a table. Okay, Veterans Day, I think that's. We doing one?
Yes, oh yes.
And then holiday lighting. So how many events are you doing this year?
Well, the attachment that you see here are sort of the signature large-scale special events. When you talk smaller community events and we have our esteemed fourteen. Fourteen, as far as our, our own larger events. Then, of course, we have marketing partnerships with other entities. So I know sometimes with partner events, certain numbers have been thrown around in the past that's more voluminous than that, but when you talk about actual city-produced events.
We just finalized some dates with the Catamounts down at the Desane School Building.
Yeah.
So there'll be another theater run, which is usually sixteen-ish nights, so, yeah.
Well, I have to say to your two people sitting in back of you, I watch them run their legs off and their teams. Yeah, when, last year I saw eighty-one events and you had, we're averaging three a week at times. I thought we needed wheelbarrows to get them to their cars. So I'm glad it's maybe a little bit more balanced.
And for Alex Reeves, our operations manager, our senior events coordinator, it's a lot. And as the new person joining their mix, it's amazing what a small staff puts on and I appreciate that recognition of their efforts, their hearts are in it. But as with many things, we have to make sure we can sustain high-quality events and we don't wanna spread ourselves too thin and start diluting the quality. And you see with these attendance numbers last year, with some of the large-scale signature events, a lot of success. And as you saw with a lot of community input and engagement with the PRL Vision Plan, there is an appreciation and a desire for more. So that's where, but with partnerships like with Westminster Chamber and, you know, it's like, of course, what our friends at Best Star are doing at the Orchard. While they're extremely capable, they cannot do it all, so it takes a village and we'll keep working at it. I appreciate that recognition of their efforts and just, we wanna sustain high quality.
Well, and I wanna sustain their life longer than running them ragged and burning them out.
They do have a lot of energy.
My kids just come and help.
Yeah.
But just to be clear, are you saying that we went from eighty-one to thirty-two? Is that what's happening?
Some of the count was when Rich Newman was in that position and some of them were like a little bit more like Free Fitness Week and some of those other ones that our team supports with marketing as well. So it's not just even planners necessarily doing a city event, but we do some backend support with liquor licenses, some of that stuff, but it's also our marketing team is very, very busy in PR now. So some of those rec events or public safety open house, we assist with a little bit as well. So some of those get into that.
So it's gone down?
I think, I think there might be. So the special events team puts on this primary component, I think, but the mayor's referencing is some of the larger things that the recreational libraries operations put on that add to that count. So this team is focused very mighty, mightily on this list. And then there's the additional activities that PRL does throughout the year, whether it may be a Harry Potter night at the library or something of that nature that adds up.
We had two or three sheets full of things and overwhelming.
Shred-a-thon, you have some public safety events, like Arts and Culture Week, Kate Cook, Arts and Cultural Affairs Coordinator. You know, we have multiple events going on during that week, you know, Historic Westminster Downtown at the Orchard. We'll have a grand opening for Squires Park, you know, shortly, so.
So we can get that grand total of those other activities and report that back to you.
Yeah, so I'm just curious on the trends, right? So if all the other stuff that you guys do, is that going up, down, neutral? I'm just curious, because to the mayor's point, we wanna keep you guys healthy and alive for longer. So thank you for all the work that you do.
Speaking of number of events, one of my items to check in council on was in October, I believe I was given a target list of ten to twelve. um, I, I believe I was given a target list of ten to twelve events for Council as part of the calendar. I'm counting seventeen.
We've given them to you. We're okay. Right?
Okay. Thank you.
So you surpassed your, you've got an excellent, excellent start.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Thanks a million.
Thank you.
Take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Also, I have the electric glass. The setup is really cool.
It's so beautiful.
We are back.
All right. Ready when you are.
We're ready.
Okay, Mr. Lindsay?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Proteman and Councilors. I'm here to, um, here to do the Chief of Staff's office, Budget and Priorities presentation this evening. As we get started, I'd like to recognize some of our staff that's here this evening. City Clerk Abby Fitch, Aaron Fariter, our Policy and Budget Administrator, Brian Pogan Class, our Municipal Court Administrator, Armando Martin, our Diversity and Inclusion Administrator. And the last member of my management team that's not here this evening is Jen Prehn, our Operations Manager, uh, who is, also does process improvement for the city. And because of that, she's at the Alliance for Innovation Transforming Local Government Conference right now. That's why she's not here. I want to briefly highlight, uh, the 2025 budget and the objectives of the Chief of Staff's office. We are comprised of the Municipal Court, the City Clerk's Office, City Hall Operations Office, the city's Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Program, which we colloquially know as the Jedi Program, and then our Policy and Budget Office. These might seem to be, uh, random functions, and in one sense they are, but, um, in another sense, these are functions that support the mission and vision of the City Council and the city. These are also familiar because many of them were part of the General Services Department, which was eliminated in, uh, 2023 as part of a restructure, and we moved them to be, uh, within the Chief of Staff's, uh, office. And you can see listed below, um, we have alignment with all of, uh, the items from the Strategic Plan, working with Budget, your policy development, our City Clerk's Office, our Court. We really hit all of those, all those items from the Strategic Plan. The Chief of Staff's Office has those four workgroups that I mentioned, and then our administrative, uh, function. You'll see on the charts this evening, kind of a hodgepodge of those budget charts, and I, I apologize. The Chief of Staff's Office was reorganized, uh, with the 2025 budget and was separated into an independent office, separate from the City Manager's Office. Prior to that, some functions were in, uh, different departments, different offices. So tracking is a little bit, uh, a little bit confusing over the last, uh, four years, but where possible, we've shown that within the presentation. We moved the city, the Chief of Staff's Office to separate out of the City Manager's Office for, uh, transparency purposes, um, to be able to show those functions, um, which make up a fairly substantial financial impact, separate from, uh, the functions within the Chief, within the City Manager's Office, excuse me. And I do want to highlight our administrative function. I don't have a, uh, slide separate for that, but our administrative, uh, workgroup is myself, uh, our Executive Administrator, who supports the entire workgroup, uh, and then our Diversity and Inclusion Administrator. I'm gonna start off with the City Clerk's Office, which I think you are all very familiar with, uh, so I'm not gonna go, uh, go into too much, except I, I do want to highlight a couple of things that the Clerk's Office does that you might not see on a Monday evening. Um, so the Clerk's Office administers the city elections. They administer the liquor licensing process, uh, and they're also, um, the record keeper of all of the city's official records. They've held a steady 7.0 FTE count through the four years that are listed here. And I would highlight, uh, highlight a couple of items from the budget. So most of what you're gonna see for, uh, all of the groups that I, uh, have the pleasure to lead is that, uh, the, um, most of the budget is within the personnel category. We're not heavy on capital projects, we're not heavy on, uh, supplies, uh, commodities, capital outlay. There's a bit of contractual services within some of our functions, but primarily what you're seeing is, uh, personnel, which is driven by our FTE count. Within the City Clerk's Office, uh, our biggest category separate from that is contractual services. Uh, and we provide, uh, or we pay for services like elections. Uh, both counties, uh, we have, uh, an intergovernmental agreement with either county, uh, to administer coordinated elections, so that budget, uh, is within the contractual services line. Uh, and then a number of software subscriptions for our records management, um, and a number of other programs that we use within the City Clerk's Office. Here's our lovely, uh, City Clerk's Office team, uh, recognizing City Clerk's, uh, Week. And, uh, we've listed here their priorities for 2025. Um, I would just highlight a couple of them. We've been in the process of evaluating the city code related to boards and commissions, um, including our recruitment processes, uh, and we're working, uh, working to bring that back to you. Reviewing and updating the city code for liquor and business licenses. Actually, City Council's taken a couple of actions within the last few meetings, uh, around this one. And then there at the end, uh, coordinating the municipal election with Adams and Jefferson Counties, since this is an election year. Next, I'll move over to City Hall Operations. City Hall Operations Office, uh, while it says City Hall, it's not just specific to City Hall. It's really citywide, uh, operations. Uh, this includes the city's environmental compliance program, our facility security program, print shop, messenger, community assistant, and passport acceptance services. Um, we do indeed have a print shop here in the city and, uh, in the lower levels. Uh, we do indeed have a messenger. The city has, uh, thirty some odd facilities that, uh, the messenger stops at on a daily basis, uh, to move, uh, papers and packages and supplies between facilities. Our community assistants, um, are the folks that sit at the front desk in City Hall. They answer the phone and they greet folks that, uh, arrive here in the facility. Um, the 7.6 FTEs been, uh, the same for years, uh, for years previous with our City Hall Operations Office. Uh, and here's one of our passport acceptance, uh, agents, uh, working with some happy customers. So our City Hall Operations Team is also responsible for a number of miscellaneous tasks, uh, and programs and projects that don't necessarily have a home within another department or division within the city. Um, so depicted here is, uh, the, um, the compactor that's at the Westminster Sustainability Center. Um, so our environmental compliance, uh, team and City Hall Operations Manager, um, were really pivotal, pivotal in launching the Westminster Sustainability Center. And have been appoint, point people for that effort, um, and they continue to remain our liaisons with, uh, with the sustainability team and continue to pay the bills, uh, and are the point people with landlords and also with, uh, the work we've done with the residents across the street. I would highlight that also because of the contractual services line. Uh, you see a rather large increase from 2024 to 2025, and that's because we, uh, centralized, um, all of the recycling costs that were around the city from those dispersed recycling centers, uh, and also budgeted for, uh, the lease payments for the, uh, the, uh, facility that the city is leasing for the Sustainability Center. Uh, our priorities, I think, really highlight that, um, this team of, uh, 7.6 FTEs really gets a lot done, um, within their small workgroup. Um, you know, we have one or two people within each program. So, uh, priorities for 2025, our facility security team is working to update software for access control, the security camera system and the building notification system that's here in City Hall. Um, we're looking to expand educational opportunities and accept additional hard-to-recycle and reuse items at the Westminster Sustainability Center. You may have seen within the last few weeks that we've started to accept mattresses at the Westminster Sustainability Center, and, uh, this workgroup has been hard at work. Uh, here, the sustainability team for the city, uh, received a grant, and our Operations Manager worked with, uh, sustainability recycling. Uh, we purchased a box truck to house those mattresses in because you can't store them inside. Administered the grant, worked with the landlord, uh, on a couple of items related to this, and have been able to open that, that new, um, that new service through the Sustainability Center. Uh, lastly, one of our priorities, uh, is around, uh, training for employees on spill prevention and hazard communication. Uh, that's a critical piece of our environmental compliance function. Um, and we're also looking to provide additional employee training opportunities across the organization. Next, I'd like to highlight our Municipal Court. Our Municipal Court Division, um, when you think of it, you might think of the, the judge and pictured here with a wellness court graduate, but there's, uh, a number of functions that take place down at the Municipal Court, and they're not all actually within this, uh, workgroup. This workgroup handles really the operations of, uh, the court. Um, they're the first person that you come to see when you walk through the door. Um, we administer probation, uh, we administer the wellness court program, and do any number of, uh, additional services associated with those. We work hand-in-hand with the judge, with, um, the prosecutor's office, and also with our police department, which has a presence, um, at our Municipal Court. This team has been steady at, uh, twenty FTEs, and I would also highlight that two of those are, uh, our presiding judge and our associate judge. For ease of, uh, really doing our budget, uh, those two FTEs, while not within my purview, we handle their financial needs through, uh, the Municipal Court Division's budget, uh, just through ease of, uh, management. Um, so they're also listed within that, that FTE count. That FTE ma, FTE count has maintained, uh, and been stable through any number of staffing challenges we've had during COVID and post-COVID through changes with offering court on Saturdays and on holidays, um, and through a 72% increase in cases over the last four years. Uh, we've done that through real perseverance for the team, um, and from our leadership finding any number of ways, uh, to become more efficient, uh, in processing court cases through. Pictured here is, uh, our Court Administrator, uh, working on our, uh, Municipal Court Advisory Group, and we had an open, uh, open house recently. Uh, the budget for our Municipal Courts has been fairly steady, although we've seen a fairly large increase in contractual services in 2025. That's because we have some, uh, mandated requirements around offering translation services and public defender services, uh, to the customers at the Municipal Court. Uh, and when we see a fairly drastic increase in the number of cases that come through the court, we're offering translation services more frequently, uh, and we're providing, the city is providing public defender services more frequently. That contractual services line also includes, uh, our security, uh, security guards contract and, uh, the, uh, cost of doing video advisals with, uh, our accountees. Here's our, uh, our awesome Municipal Court Team, and, uh, we've got our, uh, some of our police team that's at the, the court that's pictured there. Our Municipal Court Division has a lot going on in 2025. Certainly, the design, uh, and construction of our replacement courthouse project is top of mind, uh, for everyone that's, that's worked down there for a long time. We're also using, uh, any and all technology we can, like I mentioned, to enhance and streamline our, our services, um, and provide options to, uh, operate virtually for appropriate cases. Um, we've continued to implement improvements through our case management system, and we've moving towards the court being a paperless system as much as possible as we can within the modern-day criminal justice system. Um, and lastly, uh, I think this one is, is timely with the mention this evening of some of the Municipal Court legislation. Uh, every bit of legislation that, that's passed that impacts our Municipal Court or public safety, right, requires some change to practice or processes, uh, with our team. So, uh, every year after, after that legislation is passed, we're looking to implement changes within our court management system or docket setup or, uh, any number of systems that we use. I think last I want to highlight our Policy and Budget Office, uh, and this is rather timely. I think we've seen, uh, just this evening, I think we've highlighted all of, uh, the efforts that are listed up there, uh, with our budget process that'll come up next, our legislative efforts that we had, and then certainly our strategic plan that was on, uh, that was on earlier. Um, our budget team is here to support, um, support and then implement the budget, the annual budget that the city, that the City Council adopts, because that's really the framework for city operations, uh, so the city can work to achieve the vision, uh, and mission that City Council has established. We've had a change in FTEs over, uh, the time period that we're showing, and most of that is, uh, actually all of that is related to, uh, reorganizations. It's not necessarily the addition or subtraction of FTEs. Uh, so from 2022 to 2023, the procurement function was moved from Policy and Budget and into the Finance Department, so that was a, a nut, uh, reduction of three FTEs for this group, but an increase of three FTEs in our Finance Department. Uh, and then from 2023 to 2024, uh, the city moved the utility financial planning function from Public Works and Utilities and into the Policy and Budget Office. Again, uh, no overall increase in staff for the organization. Uh, and that change was to combine the budget, financial planning, and rate-setting staff all in one workgroup in the Policy and Budget Office. As I mentioned, uh, with, with all the workgroups, really Policy and Budget Office shows that most of our costs are within that personnel, uh, personnel line. Um, contractual services here is, is the next largest, uh, and that has centralized cost centers in Policy and Budget that were previously spread out, so that's why you've seen a little bit of an increase. Um, it also has some software subscriptions that we utilize to manage our budget process every year. Our Budget, uh, Policy and Budget Office, uh, we have a lot on the plate as well for 2025. Uh, certainly, we're in the middle of a state legislative, uh, session, and we came back from DC a couple of weeks ago. We're constantly working to advocate on behalf of the city. Um, we were in touch with, uh, Rep. Evans' office, uh, last week, uh, over some, some reductions we've seen at the federal government that impact the fire function, uh, and we're, we're constantly in touch with our federal partners and our state partners, as you've seen this evening. We're looking to explore alternative funding and revenue strategies for city projects and programs. You're gonna see some of that in, uh, in the next presentation this evening. Um, but that's, that's a, uh, that's one of those goals that we're, we're continuing to work on every year. Uh, and last, we're developing an online monitoring tool to showcase the city's strategic plan implementation. Uh, you've seen the Performance Measures Tool, uh, that was also highlighted this evening. Um, and we're working to continue to drive that to be a more effective, uh, communication tool for the work that the city's doing and the performance that the staff is, uh, staff is really showing off. And that's the end of my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
For 2026, do you think you'll be staying pretty stable, kind of, now that you've moved around and sort of settled, hopefully, into a good rhythm with, with different divisions you have?
Yes, I do believe we'll be staying, staying fairly stable.
Wait, is that the, is, do you also think that's true for contractual needs? Your contract, contract services?
Sorry, can you say that again?
Do you also think that that's in the, for the contract services that you currently have? Cause I know for some other departments, you know, programs and things like that are increasing on an annual basis. Do you foresee that?
Um, I think there's some, uh, areas where I'm concerned about increases. Our public defenders, uh, contract is one where we've seen some fairly large increases uh, over the last, um, three years, uh, translators also, so I have some concerns there. A lot of that's driven by demand, um, right, and how much caseload is going through. Um, also, just the cost of doing business has been passed on, like with our, with our public defenders. Um, that's a service that's provided through the, by the state, through the Office of Alternative Defense Counsel, so we're subject to their increase of costs with our contracts as well, so. Uh, some of those were at their mercy. I think those are probably the two biggest ones I'm concerned about. I think the rest, I'm hopeful, um, will stay fairly steady.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Camellia?
I'm just curious, you mentioned the public defenders, and I kind of want to expand on that line. Is the office, is the state program the only option we as a city have for public defenders?
So it's not the only option that, uh, we have prior, um, prior to... Actually, I'm gonna ask Brian to come down and help me out before I go too far down this.
Have to comment on his beautiful haircut. It's no longer orange.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Proteman Council, uh, Brian Pogan Class, Court Administrator. So, um, previously, and this is prior to some additional legislation that's passed, we did have, um, contract public defenders, um, and we moved to the OADC, handling that representation, um, for several reasons. One, we felt we were able to get more tenured and experienced, um, attorneys that way, who were providing, um, some improved representation to our clients who qualified for those services. So we thought that was very beneficial for our, our citizens who are appearing and requiring public defender services. Um, additionally, legislation shifted, requiring more time from those public defenders, public defender being available for all of our in-custody defendants, as well as with the increased caseload, um, over the past four years, demand on those services has increased. So, the other option that we, we could look into that we haven't deemed viable at this point financially would be to bringing in in-house, um, public defender services, which would also create some supervision challenges that we'd have to navigate and work through as well.
Thank you. Okay, and so it sounds like it's a choice of ours to go through the state, though, and that there might be other options we could explore?
Yes, we have, we have looked at other options, and at this point in time, working with the OADC seems to be the most effective, um, service we've got. We've got, uh, I believe currently fourteen public defenders that, through OADC, that rotate through appointments. They don't just practice in Westminster as public defenders. They practice at state level, other municipalities as well. So it gives us a wide bench of, of public defenders to provide those services.
All right, thank you. Um, and then, and I don't, I'm hesitant to ask this, but I will, uh, cause this might expand the budget if we did it, but, um, I'm just, I would see such a use, especially in the Clerk's Office, if not in a lot of these others, for Copilot or some other AI. Have we looked at that or gotten estimates for what that might be if that were added to the budget for the future? Uh, because it could streamline a lot of the processes that our folks are doing.
Yeah, um, I absolutely, thank you for the question. So, um, our team is, uh, is looking at and utilizing already a number of, uh, a number of AI tools. AI, I think it's a regular part of, uh, Abby and the Clerk's Office Team processes. The city recently expanded its offerings with Microsoft. I'm not the best person to describe Copilot or what that looked like.
Comes with a lot of the packages with 365, so.
I, there's, yeah, and I, I don't know the correct terminology. Um, I, we are looking at a, at a, um, session for City Council around, uh, budget implications of some of the AI tools, um, that, uh, depending upon the feedback later this evening, um, we might try to put that on the docket for the May third, um, budget session with City Council.
That makes sense. I, I hate to, I, I just think it's smart to look at all of our options and debate it, and at least have us evaluate, is this something we want to consider? So, that's my feedback. And then, I have a couple of other questions, but they're not directly budget-related, but you made me think of them. Um, so I'll, I'll try to be very quick, but, um, the Sustainability Center, um, we had, I, I know I asked when we approved that, and we, I've heard it come up a few other times, expanding the hours, maybe through volunteers, maybe through our youth advisory panel. Uh, I realize that it's run by a third party, but is that something that the city could help? I realize it would be capacity of someone to help manage the interns or volunteers, but I feel like that's something we could bring in, uh, to expand for weekend hours. We could easily have unpaid interns, I feel like, helping manage the facility, at least for single stream, if not all of the other services, at least for the outdoor part. We could maybe cut down what those services are, just do single stream if we had some volunteers or internships. Just want to throw that out there again. I know we've discussed that a few times, kind of wondering where that stands, because hours are pretty limited.
So I think this would be, um, best return for, for, uh, discussion here. We offered slightly extended hours last summer, um, and we didn't see a huge increase in utilization during that time period. I, additionally, have concerns with the noise impacts and the neighbors, um, so going later in the evening presents some concerns there as well. So I think this is really a, a balance of, um, service and impacts.
Understood.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I see no more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council, Erin Farad, Policy and Budget Administrator. The purpose of tonight's presentation and discussion is to review initial 2026 budget priorities as well as provide staff guidance on next steps related to infrastructure needs. Tonight's presentation is divided into three main sections. First is providing a 2026 budget development update. Second is sharing an overview of fire and street infrastructure needs, including funding opportunities and community engagement. And the third would be requesting direction from you regarding 2025 funding opportunity for the North Fire Station, long-term funding opportunities for fire and street infrastructure, and developing a community engagement plan based upon our focus on infrastructure. So please take notes throughout and we'll save our questions for the end. As Chris mentioned, the budget is the foundation for how the city operates. We are currently closing out the 2024 budget, operating in 2025, and simultaneously preparing for 2026. Here is an illustration of how the 2026 budget is developed. As you can see, the process started in January and runs all throughout the year, finishing with adoption by City Council and implementation. Diagram illustrates our process and steps we followed to collaboratively build a budget. Budget development is just getting started. At each step, staff and City Council work together to use best practices, better understand the community's needs and explore the resources needed to meet those needs in a responsible manner. As of today, we have discussed the best, the best budget practices early in January. After the Chief of Staff presentation tonight, we have heard all 11 Department Directors review their 2025 budget priorities. We've completed the City Council and Department Director Strategic Plan Review Workshop on February 1. And just this past Thursday, we completed our Town Hall. From these discussions, staff heard two initial budget themes, regarding staffing levels and needs and infrastructure, specifically fire and street. We heard your concerns about staffing levels and needs. As a part of the budget process, staff will review current staffing levels and consider reclassifications where needed and bring back this as part of the proposed 2026 budget. Several directors, such as Director Kimball and Director Guo, mentioned during their presentations of how, as their priorities have changed, they've reclassified positions within their department to be able to meet those needs without adding new FTE. Staff will continue looking into this with the support of City Manager Andrews. And while we understand the importance of reviewing staffing, tonight we will focus on resilient infrastructure, specifically fire and street infrastructure. With that, I have my pleasure. Introduce some key work.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Councilors. I'm Eric Burke, Fire Chief of the Westminster Fire Department. Tonight, I will be reviewing fire department operational and infrastructure needs. Some of this information you've heard before, but adding additional detail and some new information that has not been presented before. The first thing that I'd like to start off is highlighting the service gaps that we have identified in the community. There are two service gaps, one in the north part of the city in the Orchard area and a second in the central part of the city along Westminster Boulevard. These are service gap areas because we cannot cover these areas with the industry standard of four minutes of travel time, which applies to both fire and medical incidents. The map on the left shows the blue lines of the city limits and the dark shaded colors in there represent the four minutes of travel time from our existing fire stations. And just to review, travel time is the moment the fire engine or medic unit leaves the station, how far it can travel within four minutes, and then taking that radius to make a full circle for your coverage area. We work very closely with our neighboring departments from an automatic and mutual aid standpoint. And so on this map on the left, we also have yellow shaded areas, which represent the four minute travel time for our partners and surrounding fire departments. You can see in the north and the south, whether it's a Westminster station or a neighboring department, we cannot cover those areas within the four minutes of travel time. We've discussed before the importance of travel time. Time sensitivity is in, is critical in emergency services. You know, fires can double in size every 30 to 60 seconds. They burn faster with the plastics and lightweight material. And from a medical standpoint, the quicker we intervene, the more likely we are to prevent catastrophic outcomes. The map on the right also represents the four minute travel time in the dark shaded colors, but the colored dots on the right also represent 2024 emergency incidents that we responded to. To address these gaps that we discussed before, we need a fire facility in these areas. All right. So this slide here represents the four minute travel area in those gap areas with the proposed fire station number seven in the central part of the city and the fire station number eight in the north part of the city. You can see how well that those areas are now covered within four minutes of travel. The map on the right also shows that coverage, but it shows how many of those emergency incidents from 2024 would have been covered with a fire station in the north and central areas. One thing to note is that we have talked quite a bit about the city nearing, near buildout and there's very little land available for development. The vast majority of developable land is within these gap areas. So there's a service need now, and as that development increases, so will the service needs. On the slide here, we review our calls for service per year. As you're aware, over the last 20 years, we've experienced a 128% increase in calls for service, exponential increase of 34.5% in 2021 and 22, exceeding 17,000 calls for service for the first time in 2023, and then exceeding that total again in 2024. As a department, during this time period, we've added very few response resources and we've operated out of the same six fire stations that we've had. Some may speculate that this increase is due to population growth, but our population, well, population is not the main driver for this increase. Our population during the last 20 years has only increased approximately 12%. And during our analysis, we identified a resident utilization rate, or in other words, how often residents utilize fire department services. In 2004, that rate equated to one call per 14 residents. In 2024, that rate equated to one call per seven residents. So the utilization rate has doubled. And even if our population had remained the same for 20 years, our calls for service would have doubled because the rate is twice what it was. In addition, to research some of the reasons for this increase, we also reached out to our surrounding fire departments and reviewed their experience of the last 20 years. We reviewed the data provided by Arvada Fire Protection, Adams County Fire Protection, Brighton Fire, North Metro Fire, South Adams Fire Protection, and Thornton Fire. Brighton Fire and Thornton Fire are the only two departments they were able to provide 20 years of data. But Brighton has experienced 181% increase over the last 20 years, Thornton 138% increase. Now those two municipalities have experienced some significant population growth, much more than we've experienced in Westminster. Another comparison point over the last five years, from 2019 to 2024, Westminster had a 40.5% increase in calls for service. That would place us third in those departments, Thornton at 44, and North Metro at 43.5. And North Metro serves Broomfield and North Glen. I mentioned before that we experienced that exponential growth in 2021 and 22, totaling 34.5%. That increase places us third behind North Metro at 38.8 and Thornton at 36.9. So again, we're seeing some regional changes increasing calls for service. We've also done additional analysis to try and identify other some causes for this increase. And there are a few things that we can point to. Number one, there, there are many factors that's contributed to it and there's not one item that we can say this is the sole factor. But one thing that we have identified is there's been a change in society following COVID in 2020. All of the agencies that I mentioned, when you include Westminster, so a total of seven, four of the seven agencies experienced increases of over 30% in 2021 and 22. The utilization rate and the needs from the communities changed post-COVID. The second item is that as we age, our, our medical needs increase. In reviewing Westminster's patient data, we determined that the average age of our patients has increased by approximately 10% since 2012. In addition, the number of patients that we have treated that were 70 years or older of age has increased by 52.7% since 2012. And the last item that we have identified is that there's increased mental and behavioral health needs in the community. We've mentioned that before in some of the interviews related to our calls for service. From a data standpoint, it's difficult to pull that objective data from our fire department reporting system. One, because Nemesis sets the standards and they've changed it over the last 20 years. We've had at least three different reporting systems. And there's a subjective nature to patient care documentation. If you respond to a patient who has and is in crisis, whether that be mental or behavioral health, who's also under the influence of alcohol and potentially experienced physical trauma, as a medical provider, based on my assessment and training, I get to choose which one of the three I believe is the primary reason for the medical call. So if I run a report and I have all the trauma calls, it doesn't capture the patients that also had the underlying mental or behavioral health crisis. However, co-responder data supports the position that there is an increasing need of mental, behavioral health services in the community. This data is from 2021 through 2024. Active calls means that the co-responders were called to the physical scene by PD or FD staff. In 2021, the co-responders, co-responders had 759 active calls. They increased each year and in 2024 totaled 1,338 active calls. This represents a 76% increase. Medical transports associated with these active calls have increased as well. They went from 89 in 2021 to 369 in 2024, a 314% increase. So again, co-responder data helps justify that position. This is a contributing factor to our increase. There are many other factors, but these are the threes that we can point to through data analysis. The Westminster Fire Department is an all hazards fire department, meaning that we provide services to address all hazards associated with emergency incidents. And as you're aware, we provide fire suppression and are the medical service provider for the community. And we provide a variety of technical and specialty services. All of our personnel are certified in firefighting and emergency medical care. So regardless if they're on the engine or a medic unit, which is also known as an ambulance, they can provide both of those services at a moment's notice. We, when we look at our, the instance that we respond to, there's many different incident types. However, the operations necessary to resolve those incidents can largely fall into two buckets, emergency medical and fire rescue. And so this slide here represents over 51,000 calls for service between the years of 2022 and 2024 and the operations that were required to address those incidents. 66% of the time, the operations were medical in nature, meaning our firefighters assigned to the engines or the medic units provided basic and or advanced life support services. 25% of the time, the, the services necessary were fire rescue in nature and that work is almost exclusively handled by our fire engine staff. And that includes responses to fires, hazardous conditions, rescue incidents, activations of fire alarms and sprinkler systems and many other incident types. You'll notice that there's eight and 8% up there and those are incidents or operations that cannot be qualified because we were canceled in route or there was no incident upon arrival. This slide highlights our current facilities and provides a foundation for our infrastructure challenge discussion. Our emergency responders operate out of six fire stations and next to those stations, you can see the years in which they were built. As you're aware, our headquarters are located in the Public Safety Center and we co-occupy that space with the Police Department. And we have a training tower off of Elk Drive in historic Westminster. We have facilities that are aging and as you saw on the slide, some were built in the 60s and 70s and some that are in need of total replacement. These, the stations that are in need of total replacement care share some common infrastructure challenges. And those challenges are also present in the stations that need modernization. Those challenges are the stations were not built to house modern apparatus and equipment. We are challenged to fit our apparatus and equipment in those stations. We have specialized apparatus and equipment that are designed to be paired together for emergency response, but because of space limitations, they're separated at different stations. That ultimately impacts our response capabilities and the time, a timely response. These stations were not built from a modern diverse workforce. They were built at a time when our workforce was almost exclusively male and they don't have equal amenities for firefighters of all genders. And 10% of our firefighting force is female. The lack, these stations also lack modern safety and health provisions. Cancer is the leading cause of death in firefighters and the modern stations have built in features and decontamination areas to prevent exposure to contaminants that often come back to the station by our gear and equipment. Again, all of these stations lack those features. To focus in on some of the stations themselves, Station 3 needs to be replaced due to those common challenges and also because the fact it started out as a singular modular building that's already been expanded four times, has reached max electrical capacity. Station 4 needs to be replaced for the same common challenges. In addition, it's downhill from a park near a creek, has experienced flooding and settling issues, signs of potential structural concerns and that residential design is not conducive for emergency turnout.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
What, you've said that a couple of times about Station 4. What is the, what's the issue with the residential design for the fire station?
Yes, thank you. The residential design is there's multiple stairs inside that station. And so for a turnout standpoint, we're running up and downstairs to turn out. You want a very quick path, a straight path. You don't want to be going up and downstairs to turn out to call. So that is part of it. Some of those stairs themselves are, are very small and somewhat hazardous that personnel can fall and trip going down those stairs. So again, you want a fire station that is a straight turnout directly to the apparatus bay. Our training tower provides an opportunity to conduct limited drills related to ladders and ropes and hose line movement, but it's not a burn building. So we cannot conduct burn training in the city. To do so, we're required to use sites outside of the city. That takes us away available, or takes us away from emergency response longer. And then the responses to emergencies are longer because we are away from the city. These sites are limited and we're struggling to find sites to be able to conduct our own burn training for the year. In addition, this does not have comprehensive training props to help us meet the need, the dynamic needs of emergency services. I do want to highlight that as a fire department, we do a lot of classroom training and we do a lot of training via Zoom and Teams and other platforms. But you cannot do physical training via those platforms and this is why we need a training facility. In addition, as I mentioned in our budget presentation, we have a very long academy, nine months right now. We need to have probably two academies a year. We need, we need some more autonomy and flexibility in our onboarding process and a training facility helps us do that. And the last is that we've outgrown our headquarters and it does not meet our future, our current or future needs in that we have administrative staff working out of fire stations because there's a lack of space in headquarters. This slide here highlights that we have multiple stations that are in need of modernization. They are to address those common challenges of inadequate storage for apparatus and equipment, lack of modern health and safety standards, unequal amenities for diverse workforce and for service expansion. Station 1, albeit our oldest station, is in need of a modernization to address those common challenges, but it's our busiest station and we're monitoring the calls for service at that location. We potentially need to add an additional resource down the road. And to do so, we're going to need to expand the size of that station. Station 5 has some of the same limitations as far as inadequate storage and equipment, modern health and safety features. Right now, it's a staff of three and so while it doesn't have equal amenities, there's easier workarounds, but we may have to add a unit in the future. And if we do, then we would have to address that as well. Station 6, the, the needs at Station 6 relate to the need for equal amenities for all firefighters and some of the health and safety features. Tonight, I want to review an immediate opportunity for the North Fire Station. The North Huron Urban Renewal Area Funds present an immediate opportunity to address the NARS service gap and a portion of our infrastructure needs. And tonight, we are seeking your direction regarding the use of these funds. These funds can be used to hire an owner's representative, acquire land, design and construct a fire station, and purchase costly apparatus, such as the fire engine and our medic unit that will serve the area. Utilization of URA funds for the aforementioned items do not require any new or additional funding support from the community. The use of URA funds is time sensitive in that the projects must be in a contract by 2028 and there's growing development interest in the area and which limits our availability of land for fire department use. And as those options diminish, the costs will go up. The one thing that the URA does not provide for is staff. To address the staffing component, the department will work with policy and budget to identify funding within existing resources. We talked about pursuing grant opportunities such as the SAFER Grant. And if no options are found, we will find a way to serve the community. If that requires us to reallocate resources and staff, we will do so. We will serve the community from that facility. For the North Fire Station, we've evaluated many different service options and ultimately came to the conclusion that this station should be staffed with a fire engine, with a dedicated paramedic. This provides for four minutes of travel for both fire and medical incidents. With a dedicated paramedic, this unit can provide advanced life support services, which is the same level of service an individual would receive from a medic unit. It provides for effective fire suppression services that would not be afforded by a medic unit only station. It also accounts for the fire rescue operations, which I highlighted in the slide, which is 25% of the operations over the last three years. A few additional factors to highlight that came into that recommendation conclusion is the call volume, at least today, the call volume for the NARS station is very similar to our District 5 or Station 5. And the model of having an engine with a dedicated paramedic has proven very effective in District 5. So it's again comparable model. There's also a hospital in that area. And so there is a significant amount of ambulances or medic units in that area throughout the day that we can call in when they're available for transport services. So we have a stream of medic units that could be called in. One other factor is commitment time. When it comes to an EMS call, the medic unit has a much higher commitment time than the engine. They both arrive unseen, provide patient care, stabilize the patient. And when it's time for transport, as long as a firefighter isn't needed in the back of the EMS, the medic unit will leave, drive to a hospital, the fire engine goes available immediately for another call. While there's a hospital in that district, it doesn't mean that medic unit would always transport to that hospital. They could They could transport to Lutheran and Wheat Ridge, Good Samaritan, North Suburban, so that medic unit would be unavailable for longer periods of time. So this fire engine with an ALS provider helps us provide a consistent coverage for the community. With all stations, we will monitor the service demands and staffing needs as we go forward. One thing I wanted to mention here is that the total staff count. To bring on staffing to support a fire engine with a dedicated paramedic, using our shift relief factor of 3.9, that we need 3.9 FTEs for every 24-hour position, we would need 12 staff, or 12 full-time employees, and that would again be to staff an engine at the North Fire Station. And then from a long-term strategy, we continue to develop a long-term strategy to address and fund the central service gap, the potential pairing of a future station with a training facility, the training facility, the future staffing and equipment needs, and the replacement and modernization of existing fire stations. While the long-term strategy is still being developed, I do want to take a moment to highlight some of the actions that we have already taken to try and find solutions. During the January 27 budget presentation, I mentioned the Northwest ER at 112th, at the Northwest corner of 112th and Sheridan, and that we identified, we've had our eye in that property for some time, and identified that as a potential option for maybe a fire station, actually renovated to be a fire station or a fire administration. And so we recently toured that facility with the owner. While it has some potential, we don't think that that's the best route to pursue at this time for a couple of reasons. Number one, the owner is not interested in selling the property, only interested in leasing it. We have not received the final lease proposal, but our calculations, it would be a couple hundred thousand a year to lease. It would require a significant capital investment, whether it's a fire station or a fire administration. If we were to turn it to a fire station, a significant amount of the asphalt would have to be replaced, replaced with industrial concrete, have to build apparatus bays, which could be a very, very costly capital investment for a property we may never own. And again, the property owner right now is only interested in a lease and a significant cost. In addition, we did explore, or do some research, I should say, regarding the potential of naming rights for our fire training facility. To get an idea of what that market looks like, we did reach out to Adams 12 Five-Star Schools because they had pursued a naming rights with their stadium. Ultimately, their naming rights didn't come to fruition, but what they did pursue is advertisement funding, and that's something we do at PRL facilities now. At all of our PRL facilities, there can be advertising, and so those are things that we can explore to potentially add to the fire training facility to help cover some of the costs. It may not cover obviously capital, but at least maintenance and ongoing needs. So there's some things that we have done in the meantime. All right. That concludes Fire Department's portion, and I'll switch chairs with you.
Good evening. Paul, Clinical Director of Pub Works and Utilities. Before the meeting, the chief and Aaron and I were kind of joking that we would give each other's presentations just to change things up, but I don't think, I don't think I could give your presentation, chief. I could read the slides, but I could not get into the detail there. Similar to Chief Burke's presentation, you've seen some of this material before, with a little bit more detail. On street infrastructure, we're looking at the entire right-of-way width, the asphalt pavement, the concrete curb and gutter, the traffic signs, the pavement markings, and the traffic signal control, traffic control signalization that we have, in addition to any sort of traffic calming and mobility. So we kind of take a holistic approach. We do have a, an annual, we have an inventory of our streets. We know where they are, how big they are, how much of everything that we have within our streets, and we perform a condition assessment and rating on all of these assets on an annual basis. You can see here, the table there kind of in the middle on the left, it shows the functional class of our roadways, local streets, which are basically your residential streets, collector all the way up to your major arterial roadways, and then the PQI, which is the, basically the pavement quality index. It's our rating for those, and you might notice there that the local streets, the residential streets are the worst really out of all of our streets, with the major arterials being in the better condition. And overall, the average is 54, which is considered fair. You can tell there in the lower right, we look at everything with regard to the street, the paving cross-section, the driving surface, the two inches or so of asphalt on top, and then the base material and the subgrade underneath that. So we evaluate all of this annually. Sometimes you just can't tell the overall condition of pavement just by looking at the surface. The entire structure is necessary to support the weight of vehicles. We believe that a good goal really for the city is a pavement quality index of a fair condition, which is right at a 55, which is just about where we are right now. We think that that is sustainable going forward, although it does have a cost associated with maintaining what we have now. The idea really with pavement maintenance and your pavement program is to keep good pavement in good condition. We want to perform those maintenance activities so that we don't experience a rapid decline of the condition. It's 10 times as expensive or more to replace pavement than it is to just take care of it and keep it in good condition. This is an example of sort of where we are and where we aspire to be, just some examples of different pavements throughout the city. On the left-hand side, an excellent condition, it's basically new pavement, something that's just received a mill and overlay, and on the right, something that's deteriorated, not just on the surface, but probably the subgrade underneath it needs to be reworked as well. And then the good and the fairs are somewhere between that, which can still get a lot of good life out of with proper maintenance activities. And so our goal again is a fair condition with a 55 index. This curve, this slide has a lot going on here. You can see there on the left-hand side, the vertical axis indicates our pavement quality index. On the right-hand side is funding, and basically what you see here is that if we hold to the current funding for asphalt, this doesn't include traffic signals and signs and concrete, just the asphalt, if we hold to what we are spending this year for the next 11 years, or the next 10 years rather, that pavement quality index declines. And it does so because of the rising, anticipated rising cost of asphalt over the next 10 years. We look, we projected based on what we've experienced, the growth in the cost of asphalt over the last five years, we just projected that into the future. So there's a inverse relationship here between our buying power, where we can, the quality of the pavement versus the cost of the asphalt. So this is where we believe that, this is based on our pavement management model that we have, where we put, where we put all the inputs in, the condition of the pavement annually, it knows and understands all the streets that we have, and has worked out this projection for us. So we didn't, it has some mathematical basis behind it and some experiential foundations to it. This slide here, another graph, the yellow is the cost of just the asphalt alone, and then when we do the asphalt work, we also do concrete work around that asphalt that's necessary. We may mill and overlay a stretch of roadway. We won't necessarily replace all of the concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk with it, but we will replace what's, what's needed and to support that asphalt. So again, that same model is showing the funding needs to maintain our target PQI over the next 10 years. And so right now, we're right at a little over 12 million in 2025 between asphalt and concrete contract work. We project that we would need, you know, over 15 for the, in 2026, and then down again in 2027, and then, but generally, the trend is increased levels of funding. The reason why it undulates is because the model is telling us that in 26, we may have some more, more expensive type of preventative maintenance work where we're overlaying more projects. In 27, we would really do lighter touch preventative maintenance, which is crack ceiling and chip ceiling and things of that nature, that have a lower cost, but a very high impact. And so this wouldn't be necessarily the exact amounts of money that we would need, but it's a good representation of a network level of funding to maintain where we are today essentially. So that, just to state this, we're about 12 and a half million dollars in 2025, and this, this model is indicating that we would be north of 25 million in 2035. So that's about a double over the next 10 years in our street funding to maintain a PQI of 55, a fair condition. Concrete curb gutter and sidewalks, just sort of the qualitative basis for this, you can see some new sidewalk going in there in the upper right, and then some curb ramps being replaced. We try to rebuild things so that they are ADA compliant, and also try to fill gaps in with sidewalks, so there's a, there's a fair amount of concrete work that we, that the city performs every year. And we have a list of, an ongoing list of resident requests for such work. Our traffic signals and streetlights, you know, we, on the streetlight side, the city doesn't own very many that we have in our inventory, however, those that are on city streets, the city does pay for the maintenance and electricity that goes into those, whether it's Excel or another provider that has those streetlights. The traffic signals however, by large, other than the state roadways through the city, do belong to the city of Westminster. There's a lot of ongoing maintenance required with those. We get knockdowns of controller cabinets, we have to replace signal heads. The past two years, we've been able to, with city funding and with some grant funding from the state, we've been able to fund about a third of some major repairs to our traffic signal system. So that would be the poles, the mast arms, the signal heads, all the electronics, the communications, the detection equipment, everything that goes into operating those things. We've been able to have some good work the past couple of years, but there is more that's projected. You can see down at the bottom, the slides there, the corrosion that's happened at some of our, along our signal poles, and just due to, just due to age really, and the fact that a lot of these were, did not have corrosion prevention put on them years ago when the city operated under different standards. So new standards now, we are providing galvanized parts there, steel to prevent that corrosion. And then the last slide here, traffic calming and mobility, we have a long and growing list of resident requests related to behavioral things, drivers, pedestrian, and vehicular safety, and school zones, and just in general. Many of the, these type things, it's, it's not that the roadway, there's anything wrong with it necessarily, it's a lot of its behavioral, but people just disregarding traffic laws and common sense, and, but there are things in some places that we can do to not, to create conditions that aren't conducive to speeding. And there's a variety of different techniques that are available, and we're looking at those right now. We've got some contracts coming underway, which will give us a little bit more horsepower with the engineering community to spend the time that's necessary to evaluate these different situations. But we have a, we have a list of these things as well, and what we project these things may cost.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening again. Chris Lindsey, Assistant City Manager and Chief of Staff. I want to talk briefly about some of the funding sources that are available. I want to start with a little bit of an outline of our current, the current setup of the city's finances. So the sales and use tax that the city charges is 3.85%, which on $100 of goods would be $3.385 collected by the city. That sales and use tax represents approximately 64% of the revenue stream in the general fund itself. Property tax is applied based on the assessed value of your residential or commercial property. That's at 3.65 mils, so on a $500,000 home, you would pay approximately $108 annually. The property tax portion of the chart is, is that about the 10 o'clock? Property taxes is about 4% of the city's general fund revenue stream. I want to provide a comparison of where that sits with many of our neighbors. On the left-hand side is a list of, list of neighbors, and the first column there is sales and use tax rate. The city charges 3.85%, as I just mentioned, and then moving to the right is a comparison of property tax rates. The city on a property tax side is really a great deal for residents. We provide all the city services within the sales tax rate and that property tax mil, property tax mil being 3.65 mils. You'll see in many of our neighboring and nearby communities, they also have a buyer district that overlays an additional property tax for those residences and commercial properties. When you total those up, you can see that some of our neighbors charge upwards of 20 mils, which equates to 600 to 700 to nearly $800 a year annually in property taxes, with that city bill being about $108. I took a quick look at my own bill. I live here in the city. In the Hyman Hills Parks and Rec District, Adams County, and within the Adams 12 School District, the charge is just under 100 mils total, so the city property tax mil represents just less than 4% of the total property tax bill. For myself, it's different for every individual property because of the districts and the county, and which school district you live in. So on Thursday evening, we provided these funding opportunities to explore to, for the Community Town Hall, and showing this again this evening. We've tried to list many of the funding opportunities. I hope someone identifies something that we don't have, that we should be showing, that we need to spend, spend time on, because I'm sure we don't have everything. We've also tried to show a mix of existing and new, and also try to offer a number of different perspectives, right here, including some things that might be more controversial, like marijuana tax, or moving services to districts. We're also showing reprioritizing or discontinuing existing services or programs that the city's providing. We put those into three categories here, really to talk about these or explore as we move forward. So on the left being funds already available, I'm not going to go in too much in depth because I think most everyone saw this last week, and you also have it in your packet. We have urban renewal area or TIF funding that's available. We've already talked this evening about the North Huron URA. The city could redirect or change the intended use of our Capital Improvement Plan funding to complete different projects. And then, as I mentioned, we could reprioritize or discontinue services and fund new needs or new goals with those. For the middle grouping there, the middle category, existing taxes and fees, potential for adjustments to increase revenues. So we've got sales and use tax that's mentioned, accommodations tax, which is hotel So we've got sales and use tax that's mentioned, accommodations tax, which is hotel motel tax that's charged, property tax, our roadway improvement fee or our infrastructure fee, which is that six dollar monthly charge that's for all residents and businesses. Development fees is something that came from council. We're exploring doing a fire development fee or other development fees that could help offset infrastructure. And lastly, stormwater management fees listed here. Paul talked a lot about curb and gutter and the the concrete that's next to the asphalt or our roadways. The curb and gutter and that concrete is something that could be paid for with stormwater management fees if the city decided to go down that and could make a compelling connection that fits within our T A B A requirements. Certainly, that would cause an increase in our stormwater fees to be able to offset that, but that's something that that's out there. Lastly, the category on the right is around new strategies and new solutions. We have here listed public-private partnerships. Certainly, the two areas that we've talked a lot tonight, roads and fire, there are not a lot of public-private partnerships, but certainly if that's something that there's a desire to explore, we could look further. I mentioned marijuana tax, a dedicated tax on retail marijuana sales is something that could be explored. And lastly, moving services to districts. Certain government functions in Colorado are allowed to be funded through a special district, a governmental district that's separate from the city or county. Examples include recreation, libraries, parks, fire districts that are available and used in some of our some of our neighboring neighboring communities, as I showed on that previous slide. I think we'll go into more of this when we get to the Q and A at the end, but this is an area where staff is looking for, are there other items that we've we've missed? And is there a direction from council to explore certain of these items that are here? For the third group of or the third direction we're looking for tonight, I want to pass it over to Andy Lark, Communications, Communications Manager.
Come on, what should we do?
Come on over.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. We have been really thoughtful and about how we sort of explore this subject. Jody's mandate throughout this whole process is the community engagement, not just with budget, but with everything. We've attempted our best to align as many events with the budget engagement process as possible, what we've done in the past year and leading up to the summer event, in-person engagement. When we think about community engagement right now, we talk about, you know, the town halls, the rowing meetings, the the traditional avenues, but we also have tried to, as to the greatest extent possible, make potholes and fire as fun and as engaging as possible. That's Popple Palooza. It's our second annual. We've tried to gamify it. We've tried to create reasons for people to be aware, to be engaged in, in a somewhat of a fun way or as fun as humanly possible. We've used Access Westminster will be our new tool to sort of really demonstrate our value to the community through Popple Palooza, which starts next week. Something I really wanted to highlight was paving season. In the past, paving season was something that we feared because it was very much, who are we going to upset? And let's make sure we upset as least amount of people as possible. In the past couple of years, we've developed processes, systems, either through requiring it through contractors or us going out and firing and knocking on doors. Nothing gets a community's attention like thirty guys in high vis vests and a whatever that thing does. This is Councilor DeMott, this is Oak Street. So we we flyer countryside last summer, and because of this parade that we had, everyone welcomed us and engaged and let us sort of talk to them about what paving season looks like. We're going to do it again this year. We welcome the the challenge and the opportunity to to do that. We've also sort of expanded our digital engagement pieces, social media, website, yes, new website, new newsletter that we deliver, this video that I'm really proud of, that our team made it house. It features Chief Burke's water rescue team. We are one of two fire departments that has that in the in the in the region. It's a really, we're so blessed to have such a talented department. I want to highlight that, I want to show that so then when we do have these conversations about funding, there there's a touch point, there's a reason why our community understands why what we're doing, what we're funding. Without pass it back off to our leadership team.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm I'm sorry, Chris. I'm happy, we are happy to sort of shape our community engagement plan based on the direction that we receive.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So these are the three buckets of direction we're looking for this evening. Certainly, the immediate opportunity that the chief described with the North Fire Station and using the North Huron U R A funds. We're looking for direction on those long-term funding opportunities, what to bring back at the May three budget workshop. And then lastly, any direction to Andy and his team on community engagement regarding necessary infrastructure engagement? With that, turn over to Jody if you have any wrap-up comments.
I just want to emphasize, this is a step in the process as we move toward budget building with city council, staying focused on the themes we've heard from you and staff presented those at the beginning, tonight's focus being on streets and fire infrastructure. The North Huron and then U R A and the North Fire Station, I would just reiterate that this is an opportunity that we feel we need to let you know is here in front of us because if time passes and we circle back to it later, it it will be too late. The the funding is available in this U R A, but there's a timestamp on it. And and so as much as we haven't completed our engagement with our community, we do know from our chief that we have a need for a new station in the north, and we do have the funding up there for it. We have the capital, I should clarify, not the operating. So the chief has identified Plan A and Plan B on operating. So we do feel very strongly that we need to present this to you tonight so that we don't rule it out. Council can rule it out and say, we're not ready to do this, don't do it, or give us direction to proceed so we don't lose this opportunity. And there will be checkpoints with council. Any contract that we have to approve has to come back to you. So there's always a built-in process before these funds are expended, fully expended toward this purpose. That's that's what I would add. And then we didn't get into too much detail on streets funding. A couple of those in there you'll be familiar with. Some time ago, staff came forward and talked about the street or roadway impact fee and presented some options, and I think that was probably too early in the process. We've got ahead of ourselves a little bit, but now we can bring options back if you so direct to pursue a different way of looking at how we do that. Right now, it's a pretty clumsy fee that doesn't really relate to use or impact, actually, ironically, even though that's what it's called. It doesn't seem to relate to that. So we can, with your direction, bring something back that's more sophisticated and relates better to impacts on our roadways, for example, as one of those items. That's all I would have had.
With the U R A piece and with knowing the land that's up between a hundred and thirty-six up to the hospital, do we have any of the owners up there that would be interested to work with us and or is there, I don't know how the land stuff works, but could they get credit and for making us do?
Yeah, you and Chief.
We have identified some potential options within the areas as far as land and had just some very exploratory conversations with some of the owners to engage the interest. There's still things that need to work out and fully vet out that interest and get to the point where offers are being extended. But there there is some interest, and we have engaged in those conversations. Some details still to be worked out, yes.
With that being the really a timeline piece, is there anyone that's not in favor of allowing them to move forward with the U R A? For me, it says to the community, we're looking outside the box, we're looking at everything before we come to you, and this would be one thing we'd be able to share with them.
I just want to add, I'm not against it, I'm actually for it. And I think that one of the things with like the U R As specifically is, you know, the what it is, like people who oppose those kind of districts oftentimes feel that it's a money grab and that we funnel that money to other things. And in some cities' cases, they do, but I think that this is a clear case where you could say this is exactly why we use these kind of tools. I believe that's the same thing that we use for the interceptor to be able to get around our problems with that landed us in the moratorium. So I did not hear anybody complaining when we used that tool to get us out of that mess. So I think that that makes a lot of sense to me, and I just wanted to make that point as part of why I would support it.
Yes, no?
I'm for it. Can I just get a little bit more information? I believe I'll be for it no matter what. I just want to, I cannot imagine any other priority more dire than this and what other items might be, what would we be saying no to when we direct this money here? Are there any other things that were on the plate?
Thank you for the question. Mr. Lindsay will bring up prioritized list. Staff has been looking at this fund for quite some time and analyzing it against priorities. The fire, the potential for a fire station is fundable within this without jeopardizing that the other higher priorities in the area. And for example, city council has already given us direction on a very early priority, which is some traffic signal upgrades in this U R A area, which were relatively small compared to the total value. The fire station fits squarely in the top one or two priorities for the use of those funds. And then there are other, there are other items that staff will bring back to city council that for tonight's, and Mr. Lindsay can add to it, for tonight's purpose, this would fall squarely in the highest priority for the funds from this from this area.
Yeah, that's that's exactly right, Jody. The other ones, I we're looking at, we're looking at road roads and traffic signals like we've already already discussed and utility infrastructure as well. Those are the those are the other needs in addition to any other development assistance that might come up with development partners.
Okay. So we're not going to send Paul and the fire chief out to rock, paper, scissors over the dollars? But thank you. And then other question, how what how much money are we talking? Are we going to need to come up with additional dollars?
We do believe we can fund the entire fire station, the North Fire Station, from the U R A funds in addition to the apparatus. The impact will be, the the general fund impact will be staffing.
Understood. In that case, that's an easy yes, because, yeah, absolutely. I I'm happy to hear this, and I think if we have the capital, we should use it, we should do it.
Yes, but I have a question related to the others. So we know we have stations we need to replace fully, and so I'm guessing at some other point down the line in this process, we'll hear the other pieces, because this only covers the one out of five needs for for fire. So will there be another presentation later or meeting where we actually discuss the capital needs for the other things?
So I, Councilor, the the chief discussed tonight, which of those stations we're looking to replace and if we're looking to to modernize. I think we're looking now, getting through the first mayor, I think we're through the first item, the the North Fire Station. We're looking to which of those funding opportunities that staff has identified or or others that we haven't are open to further exploration for us to begin to work up funding strategies for those needs.
So we will be hearing the rest then?
Yes.
Only the point, because I don't want to miss those, that there's actually a lot more infrastructure needs that the fire service needs. For this, yes, it's a slam dunk. I think it makes sense that you have this next to medical facilities. It's consistent, the coverage uses the existing fund, so I think that makes sense. So I'm all for this.
Yeah, it's one piece of the puzzle. We have the rest of the puzzle to put together, Councilor DeMott.
So if we're moving on then, so on the other pieces, I have a couple of thoughts for you. I think one thing that, you know, this is to me, I think Councilor Zodi said it right, it's a slam dunk in my mind, there's no reason why you wouldn't. I think a challenge that we need to be realistic about is this is something that should have come forward as part of the package we put forward last year. This is the kind of thing that our community wants us to show, that we're doing the work ahead of time. They want to know that we're not leaving stones unturned, not that we're just trying to get, you know, the easy pad. I mean, it would have been a more easy pad and you would have had this fund for something else. You know, our community doesn't have that to be afforded to them right now. We shouldn't either. And I want to be, you know, I just want to be realistic about that because as we move down these other paths, you know, I expect that we're doing the same thing. That does not mean, in my mind, that some of these other opportunities aren't there. We had a really good discussion on Thursday at my table about some of these other things and why they didn't pass and why they did. You know, I have very specific thoughts about it. When I look at it, you know, Mr. Lindsay asked me the question, we were talking about what Bill Christopher shared, is in terms of other things that he knew we needed. And roads is the big thing that, you know, he keyed on. I think there are other things that, you know, I brought up through the discussion of the fire department's needs the first time as far as potential substations for the police department or places for them to just be able to go touchdown, take breaks, potentially book people. When we already have one of our public safety units across the city, why wouldn't we, you know, partner up? And I think it tells a more robust story to the taxpayer about what you're dealing with their dollars. And that's just one example. But if you think about the terms of the last two times that we went for public safety funds, which historically the city has supported, and they've said no two times, we had a lot of different things on the ballot. We didn't do a really good job about educating folks about what they were for. You know, we had kind of our handout in multiple places. If I think about the marijuana tax, for example, you could hate it, love it or not. The reality is people in Colorado are just going to go across the street and they're going to fund the the safety center in North Glen. That's what happened. You you could talk to the chief over there, that's a well-known thing, that they funded their police department with pot money. That's what they did. So if I think that the missed opportunity there was to say, here's what we would do with the money if if you were to pass it and realize that people are going to, you know, the people who are going to spend, whether they live here or somewhere else, they're still going to spend the money on that. You you can debate whether or not you think that's a thing they should do, you know, but those are the kind of opportunities, in my mind, where if we're very specific about what we want to do with those tax dollars, you would have had a better opportunity to actually capture those tax dollars. And I think, you know, I don't think we've done a good job of that, you know, between competing initiatives of our own, we've had a lot of charter things that were on the ballot at the same time. We just need to get very specific and we need to, you know, show those different things that we're doing what we can to spend the money that we already have, that we're being very specific about any kind of new ask that we have. And honestly, to, you know, I've always been kind of back and forth on on the marijuana tax, just because one of my big things was I really felt we needed to ask the voters whether or not they wanted that in their city. On that, they said yes. On the tax, they said no. But again, you weren't very specific about what you were going to do with that that tax money. We should have been a lot more specific about about that tax money because the reality is, is for most people, they're not even necessarily going to spend money on on that. You know, there's people who, you know, may just say, okay, we'll tax the people who are going to go buy that anyway, North Glen or Thornton or Wheat Ridge or, you know, the variety of other places that that sell that. So those are just, you know, my thoughts. I mean, obviously, you guys have a lot of work to to do to come back, you know, with with options for us. But I've I've heard the mayor say it multiple times before, especially if you're in the Adams County side, we're up against something. And, you know, I've heard a lot of times over the years about property tax, and it seems like a lot of folks on council and or staff, you know, I I get the feeling that they feel that that's an easy win. I my recollection is it wouldn't garner a ton, but it's not being realistic to the fact of what we all have to pay depending on what school district you're in, which county you're in, what special, you know, parks, if you're in Highlands Ranch. I I don't know that that's, you know, the one we should go after when, you know, traditionally the the city has been. the, the city has been open to things like public safety taxes and we seem like we've fumbled that. I think the property tax is a harder discussion in the state of Colorado. And I, I just think that you have a harder hill to, to climb, whether or not, you know, it's less impactful or not. I just feel like that's a harder hill to climb and I don't know that it garners the same kind of revenue that we need to, to meet our needs.
Two things. Before I forget, the national night outcomes, you all need your alumni members on those trucks, talking about this to the people. You shouldn't necessarily have to, but your alumni needs to. We shouldn't have it on the ballot by then if we're putting it there, but still that keeps you clean. Number two, when we do show our 3.85 for sales tax, that is, that isn't the whole picture. You need to be showing what we are paying. In, in Adams, you pay 8.60. And we, you get up close to 10 and people are going to cross the line, buying whatever they're going to buy. That, that has been, anytime looking at raising that mill levy to get real close to 10, it is a game changer. And in, in Jeffco, it's 8.35. But that's the number that should be shown, because that's what people are paying. If they're buying something in Westminster, that's what they're paying. Yeah, they're paying 3.85, but that's only a little piece. It's that 8% plus, almost 9% in Adams, that they are paying. And so don't, I don't want you thinking that 3.85, oh, we can go up. No, you need to look at that big number, because 10 is a game changer. And I know that from talking to every other city in the 56 of the other municipalities in the metro area. 10 is a game changer. And the closer you get to it, and people will go someplace else. Okay, so number one's done? Yes?
Yeah, I just think comments on the other one.
Go.
Regarding the other funding opportunities, yes, behind the impact fee, making sure that that's commensurate with the impact. So, and then if there are any sort of one-time fees, I know, for example, there's that, I'm forgetting the name of this bill, that's looking at the DMV license, DMV charges and being able to apply that towards transportation, mobility, and bicycle types of funding needs. And so is there something like that, like a one-time fee that we could look at that occurs? And then, oh my gosh, totally forgetting the, of the marijuana tax. I'm, I'm open to that. I don't think it'll be as much as we thought, because I think sales are going down. So it'll be just eyes wide open about how impactful that'll be. And I agree with you on the engagement and tax, the sales tax piece. So nothing too much on the engagement side.
Just one last comment too, related to what councillor Demont said, I think, I completely agree, I think there is, there are opportunities on a staff level. But I, I also want to acknowledge that the city, if we took a position on that ballot question, which we chose not to as a council, that would have enabled city, the city to put more education out there. And so it's accurate to say, yes, there are opportunities there to do better from a, you know, language standpoint and specificity, which is all correct. But there is also the other half of it, which is, we didn't put any money behind it. And we could have used that to educate the public as to why this was important. So wanted to just bring that up.
Just want to be clear, once a ballot question is on the ballot, the seven of us are the only ones that can talk about it. They become silent. They can't do it, because a ballot measure is on, on, and they are being paid. So we, we are the only ones that can be the hurrah, hurrah, or a citizens committee that gets put together.
The question came to us and we said, no, we didn't want to commit to it. That was a question that we had.
Whether we wanted to support or not, but that, it's more than that. Then you have to put the whole thing together. These folks can't talk about it after it's put on the ballot. That's the reason I'm suggesting it's going to be close to whatever we're going to be deciding. If they have alumni going to that national night out, they can hand out flyers and do whatever they want. And it can't be made, I, I wouldn't have it made. I'd find someplace that's going to donate the flyers, so that nothing comes from city money spent. You just have to be careful. I've been through many of them.
Hopefully I don't forget anything here. I want to, first I want to say thank you both for presenting. I know we've been through this, but I, I'm sure you have it memorized by now. I think I have it memorized by now, so thanks for doing it again. And councillor Demont nailed it, I think, with all of our thoughts and opinions a lot, honestly, on this. And so thank you for that, on how we need to conduct this going forward. I think that overall, from what I've heard at least, until I see more details, the street and roadway impact fee, I just want to get more in details on some of these ideas. That seems to me like a plausible roadway forward, in my opinion. And then I feel like some low-hanging fruit also is the infrastructure roadway fee and the stormwater management fee. And we've talked about these before, and I think last year the mayor suggested, and I strongly agree with this, that our water bill be broken out and maybe it become more of a utility bill. And so I'd like to resurrect that discussion, because I realize that impacting our roadway fee or our stormwater management fee, you know, these aren't attractive because it affects the water bill, but it isn't water, right? And I think that if residents know that, I'm not sure what happened to that discussion, but I just think that if residents knew that this is water and we have worked really hard to keep it at, you know, this rate and this amount, and then the items under it are for these other things, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe your feedback is, no, that's also not popular. Let me know, there might be a reason we haven't done this. But I really do think that the fact, I forget which one of these, but I found out at our Budget Town Hall that one of them had been updated from $6 in a long, long time. And if we even kept up with inflation, you know, that number would be different. So we would be collecting, we would, like, the gap wouldn't be so far if we were just keeping up with inflation, which we're not even doing. And so again, on the awareness piece, I love that we did that town hall, I think we can do more, just to let residents know where we're at. And the fact that we haven't kept up with these fees, I think is where we're missing some easy opportunities here. I mean, $6, right? It doesn't, and from the whole city, I'd just be like, that could really go a long way. So I'm not sure how the rest of council feels about things like that, but that seems like an easy idea. And then this, I hate to spend money to earn money, but if there's an affordable way to do surveys, I do think that while we held the town hall, we might want to get more information, just to see where folks are at about the weed tax. Maybe we can do a citywide survey if there's, you know, a stomach for that, just to see where folks are at, because I would hate to put that back on the ballot to see it fail one more time.
Here's the fun part about that, is they did pay for a survey on Sundays. And the survey said that they were on the right path. I, I, my opinion is from seeing ones that have been successful and that aren't. The difference in, in this state of things that have been successful and ones that are not, are where they're very specific, here is what we're going to do with your money. And there are ties to, to make sure that that's what happens with your money. Because too often, our state legislator has taken money and they've not spent it. Fast tracks is probably the mayor's favorite. We've been paying that.
Oh, the new police money, well, that people voted for, the 350 million's not kind of come for 10 years.
Right.
People were, they were open to the mechanism that we, we offered. We just weren't very specific about how we were going to.
Right.
Spend it.
Use it.
And there was, there was a lack of education, but in the mayor's right, that, that's difficult as a city. I was surprised there wasn't more of a, of a citizen-led thing.
Well, and it was every, it was 100 million, period. There was no.
Like, here's what's going to.
Yeah, it's not going to all happen in one year. There, there was no plan. Behind the scenes, I tried to, yeah, do things, but it is what it is.
Well, and to dive into that discussion on the communications, so my opinion here is that we shouldn't put any ballot measure up this year. I think I would be against that. I think it should go, if we did anything, it should go next year. And so we should look for every other opportunity this year and then do a lot of education up until next year. Can we spend the next year and a half working on that education before we seal the deal and go from there?
Just going to get more expensive.
Yeah. Well, that's true. And then that's where we come into, you know, okay, what is the cost lost, you know? But in the meantime, if we can take care of some of the, if we agreed to at least collect higher fees on some of our utilities, we can work on that piece right now. And then of course, we have the URA dollars that we can work on that piece right now.
Here's what I need from you folks that run the numbers. I don't care whether we talk about the stormwater fee, the road fee, what does it take? You know your number you need. What, what does it take? Include property tax. I mean, you roll those numbers around and see what it, how much it takes to make what we need. I mean, that's education and people are going to need that before we do anything. And with the accommodations tax, if we can put something on that, I mean, none of our citizens are going to have to pay for that. I'm looking for things other people have to help us with, because I'm sure you get calls to the hotels. Let those people pay for your services through an accommodation tax. Lord knows, if you go to any hotel, I mean, I've had up to $55 in accommodation taxes per night, and they don't put out all the things that it goes for. But I'd like to know, right now, I have no idea what the accommodations tax goes for. Is it just going to the general fund? I do not know. And if we added something to it, each increment, what, from all of our hotels, what might that look like conservatively at the end of one year? Just so we can plan. But I think we need all of those pieces, so that you can start playing around, because it's a guessing game until we have hard numbers.
What about short-term rentals too? Do we have a, was that part of?
It applies, our existing accommodation tax applies to short.
Can we add, I guess, more specific short-term rentals? We have a lot of Airbnbs in the city that we don't really want. So it would be nice, that would be, that could be something to look into.
Yeah, I know that we had a discussion a couple of weeks ago about looking at all of our fee structures, because so many of them haven't been updated. So I think we need to continue along that. I very much disagree, or I very much agree with a lot of what councillor Demont said. I very much disagree with not putting anything on the ballot this year. I also very much disagree on doing a survey, because the voters already voted saying that this is something that they want. So I, it's, it's already been voted in by our voters. But I also agree with councillor Demont that if we're very specific with what we're doing with the tax, it's probably more likely to pass. And that would be a new, maybe not a ton, but a new revenue stream for us, because like it's already been said, you know, people just go to other cities. And it's something that was brought up by residents at our town hall. And again, it's something that our residents have said through voting, that it's something that they want. So those were the, the things that I wanted to say.
Could I offer a little clarification?
Sure.
Mayor, and Dave, you might have to correct me if I say anything wrong. The sales of retail marijuana is something that council could allow through normal business inter, normal business action. It doesn't take a vote of the people. If you were to do that and we set up an administration scheme and a, and a whole thing, retail sales would be charged at the current sales tax rate within the city, so revenue would be generated. What we asked in a taper question was to apply an additional excise tax on, above and beyond the existing tax to bring in additional revenue. I don't recall what those, what those dollar amounts equated to, but there would be, there would be some revenue that would be brought in just by establishing and allowing marijuana sales within the city.
Correct. Yeah, I, I remember it the same way as you do, Chris. And I think, you know, back in '21, when the questions were run, they were linked together. And the question was, should there be retail sales of marijuana? And should there be an excise tax levied against those sales? And they were linked together such that if they didn't both pass, they wouldn't be effective. So that's, that's the question, you know? Do you want an excise tax? How much should it be? And I would suggest you want to look at other jurisdictions, so that you're in the same ballpark, so that people aren't avoiding your, your merchants. But understand, you know, what can it generate, that excise tax?
So, and not to jump in, but I'm going to. And the, the thing was, is that we weren't specific about what, what we do with it. I mean, we, we were not. And, and people did not realize that if they voted, they, a lot of people just thought, well, I don't want to pay extra on it, but I want to be able to buy it here. Like, I, we could tell you, I talked to plenty of people. I mean, that is what people thought they were voting on. To this day, I have people who don't understand why, well, we voted for it, because they don't, they didn't understand the way that it was formed. It was very confusing to people. And so, you know, with that being said, there is now some history that the folks who would have supported it, if you give to them what you're going to do with that additional tax, I think that you probably could capture that tax. I do totally agree with you. You, you would want to make sure that it's competitive to the surrounding areas. But really, who, who's surrounding us now doesn't allow it? I think even Jefferson County allows it now. Thornton allows it, Brimfield allows it, North Glen allows it, Feltor Heights, I think, allows it. I don't know if Arvada allows it. I don't think Arvada does. But the, you know, you just go to any of those other places and buy, you, if you, you know, or people pass them through. I mean, there's, there's revenue there that's not going to hit all the residents. And I think in, in Colorado, I mean, it is what it is. People are going to buy it. They're going to use it. So just my opinion.
Just on the timing of the ballot measure, I think, rather than a survey, I'd be more interested to bring in a consultant who actually specializes in ballot measures and who can give us a reading of, you know, is this, is it too soon? I would like, you know, I'd like to kind of, for, for a group that looks at these all the time and has some expertise in helping us to determine the right timing, I do have some hesitation over bringing something back. I totally agree that there was not a clear demonstration of how it would be utilized. And so it was like, eh. So, but I think have, taking all those inputs in and having somebody talk to us about, what's the best strategy here? And, you know, if they can do some polling for us and help us understand, you know, what, what is, what are people's sensitivities? We could add to that, you know, we can have a couple of questions in that poll that might help us with, you know, gauge tax, property tax, et cetera, versus us, as staff trying, you know, as staff trying to figure out like, what's the best move here? I appreciate that external expertise.
And if they have all of the numbers ready to roll for what things look like, it's just what, that consultant comes in and plugs all that stuff. What else do you need from us? Because we still have the judge to do.
I think the last one on the list is any feedback on community engagement relating to.
I just think any place we are, we talk about it. Streets and fire, those are our main.
Well, and the more holistic, to your earlier point that you have these numbers together and what it could look like, these different avenues we're looking at versus fees versus different taxes.
And the number is important. We need to have numbers for everything, so we know what we're talking about.
Is there an easy way to provide just a QR at all of our engagements for an easy survey, like the free, or well, I don't know if this, this numbers of the city will ever be free, but a really easy, like, five question when we're at a town hall or at a safety night out? They can just scan the QR and answer these questions? You know, what is your appetite for the following items? If we get some good options in there?
Something good that communications and you guys can look at.
I just, as long as we're not duplicating a polling effort versus like, just kind of testing the waters.
Because it helps educate at the same time.
Yeah, that's what. Yeah, but I like the idea of QR and.
Low-key, yeah.
Yeah, but I like the idea of QR and low-key, yeah.
We'll have the experts, you guys, look at that. Andy gets back.
All right.
Very helpful.
Excellent conversation. I hope you think so. Thank you. I'm sorry it got so late, but.
Now's your time to shine.
I take that a few times to get this put together correctly.
Appreciate the time.
Thanks.
That was really, really good direction. Thank you.
Is everybody ready for executive session? I just need a quick, okay.
Before we adjourn, could I just call the council on the exec session? So mayor, if I might, final item on tonight's study session agenda is a proposed executive session to discuss a personnel matter, a quarterly check-in for the presiding judge. That would be convened pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C1 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024F.
State your name, and if you're willing to go into executive session.
Obie Zadd, yes.
Amber Hott, yes.
Sarah Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demont, I guess so.
Sarah and Romella, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes. Okay.
Thanks, mayor. And if you want to adjourn the study session, then the clerk can conclude this web stream and start a new recording for the exec session.
It is 10:35, and the study session is adjourned.